Doors open? Let's see if that last noise from downstairs is that okay.
Um.
Let's see.
Let's see, but yeah, let's leave it open till.
Okay.
I'll see you back soon.
Good evening and welcome to the Westboro Select Board meeting called here on Tuesday, August ninth being six o'clock. I will call the meeting to order and I would ask, we've got a full house here for the beginning of the, the meeting, which is great, but I would ask everyone who's not already standing that can stand to join us in the Pledge of Legions.
Pledge of Legions to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first thing on our agenda before we get to the introduction of Supervisors and Patrol Officers, which I know most people are here for and not for watching us on the Select Board, of course, but our first thing on the agenda is, is open forum. I didn't receive any requests, but is there anybody here in the audience for open forum? Okay, seeing none, I did just want to bring up, as folks know, our town fire department received a mutual aid call a few days ago over to Southborough. We had two firefighters that were injured while on duty, firefighters Sullivan and Cook, and we just wanted to, as a board, express our thanks to them and also our best wishes for speedy recoveries of both of them. They were brought to the hospital, they've both been released at this point, but just reminds us of what they go through and also like to thank our police department for their support of our fire department during that trying time for them too. So, thank you to them for that piece. And with that, I will turn it over to our next agenda item, introduction of Supervised and Patrol Officers, and welcome Chief.
Thank you very much. Obviously, it's always an honor to be before you and I want to welcome the loved ones and family of our officers. I, I can tell you, I truly feel blessed that, you know, in my four and a half years as, as your police chief, to have hired 24 people and promoted 14. And I've said countless times, we hire so hard to hopefully manage a little easier. So, I'm extremely proud of my staff behind me, I say it all the time, it's very easy to advocate for them. It's just a phenomenal group of men and women who really do put their all on the, just like our fire department you just mentioned, and I'd like to just say Pat Purcell, I heard, his leadership at that call was tremendous. So, we have a great public safety team and it's because of the folks that we're about to introduce to you tonight. And as the appointing authority, I do a lot of things in private, so this is important and I thank you for letting me come and swear these new officers in, and we're in the process of hiring three more. Lieutenant Daniels couldn't be with us tonight, so I'll bring him when we swear in those officers, he had a family situation he's dealing with. So, I'm going to start tonight with our lieutenants, and I'm going to start with Lieutenant Stephen Tompkins. Steve is 23, has a service with the town of Westboro, he has a bachelor's degree from Western New England University and a master's degree in public administration from Anna Maria College. Steve was promoted to Patrol Lieutenant in November of 2021. He grew up in Westboro, he graduated from Westboro High School. He still resides in the community with his wife Natalie and is now the lieutenant in charge of our detective bureau. Stephen will be pinned by his wife Natalie. Lieutenant Cliff Luth, please come forward. He started his career with the Westboro Police Department in 2007. He began his policing career in 2003 in the town of Warren. He did obtain the rank of Sergeant there before coming to us. He's a member of the Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council Crash Reconstruction Team, and just to note, he's one of the senior investigators on that team, and he works tirelessly throughout Central Massachusetts representing 85 cities and towns and 87 entities. He's a graduate from my alma mater, St. John's High School in Shrewsbury. He's a graduate of Temple University in Philadelphia, where he attended there on a full-rowing scholarship. He has a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, he's married to his wife Susan for 16 years and two children, Madison and Brayden, and he will be pinned by Susan and the kids. If I could have the clerk, please come forward to swear in our new lieutenants.
So, Wendy's going to read something first about oath of office, is something that we've never done before, but she brought to my attention.
Okay. Before you take the oath of office, it's important to understand what it means. An oath is a solemn pledge made when you sincerely intend to do what you swear to. Honor means that one's word is given as a guarantee. Betray is defined as breaking faith with the public trust. The badge is the symbol of your office. Integrity is being the same person in both private and public life. Character means the qualities that distinguish you as an individual. Public trust is a charge of duty imposed on faith toward those you serve. Courage is having the strength to withstand unethical pressure, fear, or danger. Accountability means that you are answerable and responsible to your oath of office. So, with that, if you would raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the constitutions and laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as lieutenants?
Yes.
For the town of Westboro and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down by the government and the town of Westboro Police Department, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Can folks get the pictures they want?
Congratulations. Congratulations.
I love this. We're going to move on to our sergeants, which is an absolutely critical role within the Westboro Police Department. I'm going to ask that Sergeant McCray, please come forward. Sergeant Greg McCray was born and raised in Westboro, graduating from Westboro High School. He obtained a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from SNHU and a master's degree in criminal justice, public management from Anna Maria College. Sergeant McCray started with the Westboro Police Department in 1997 as a reserve officer and dispatcher and became a full-time officer with the police department in 2004. During this time, Sergeant McCray became a field training officer and was able to train many of the officers we have here today. Sergeant McCray also became an instructor for the department's firearm and TASER program, he's also part of our crime scene unit. Aside from policing, Sergeant McCray enjoys time with his wife and four kids, he will be pinned by his family. Sergeant Dave Holt, please come forward. Dave is an Auburn High School and Worcester State University graduate. He attended the Worcester Police Academy in 2012 and began his career at the University of Massachusetts in Worcester. Dave has since moved over to Westboro and has been here for seven years. Pinning Dave will be his wife Kathleen along with his children, James and Thomas. Sergeant Joshua Croft, a 10-year member of the Westboro Police Department, served as a motor officer on central, on Semblex, Central Massachusetts Law Enforcement Council. He is our fleet manager, he's the one that purchased and ordered my electric vehicle. He was a detective for many years, he has a bachelor's of science in criminal justice from Fitchburg State University. He, he's currently working on his master's in criminal justice at Fitchburg State University. He worked for five years patrolman with the Antucket Police Department, and he's very glad to say he escaped the island. Prior to Westboro, fire investigator, sexual assault investigator, he is currently assigned to our detective bureau as a supervisor in, in charge with Lieutenant Tompkins. Pinning is his eight-year-old son Benjamin and five-year-old son William. I'd ask the clerk to please come forward.
If you'd please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the constitutions and laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties upon you as sergeant for the town of Westboro and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down by the government and the town of Westboro Police Department, so help me God.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I feel old. So, we're going to move on, we're going to start, if I could have Officer John Vazikas come forward. Officer Vazikas graduated from Northeastern University in 2012 and attended the Northeast Regional Police Institute Reserve Intimitation Academy in 2015, where he received Defensive Tactics and Academic Award of Excellence. Officer Vazikas worked at UMass Memorial Hospital as a campus police officer for a year and a half before attending the full-time Randolph Police Academy. Officer Vazikas graduated the top of his class and began working for the Southboro Police Department for two and a half years before working for this department. Officer Vazikas is a defensive tactics instructor, he has received two commendations, one for a traffic stop where 22,000 in cash was seized along with a large substance of illegal narcotics, and the other was for the incident that occurred over at the fire station. His actions basically prevented us from having to shoot a human being, and, and that's what we've talked about in executive session with safety, but he did an outstanding job with that, and there is a person alive today because of his actions, I can't commend him enough. Pinning John will be his wife Trish and daughter Lily. Officer Charles LaPerle Jr. He's a graduate of Leicester High School, he's a Grafton resident, he's been a police officer since 2014. He worked for the Barry Police Department until 2018, and then he transferred to the Leicester Police Department where he worked until 2022. He is our drug recognition expert, expert, he's EMT certified, and pinning CJ will be his wife Melissa. Officer Amanda Joquin, please come forward. Officer Joquin graduated from Becker College with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a concentration in forensic science, crime scene processing, and was awarded top academic student in her major. She graduated from the Worcester Police Academy in 2019 and then worked at the University of Massachusetts Medical School from 2019 to 2021. She's a certified sexual assault investigator, RAT instructor, also certified field training officer and background investigator. She will be pinned by Sergeant Arthur Schofield of the Hoppington Police Department. Officer Chong Hura, please come forward. Officer Hura became interested in law enforcement after visiting his uncle in Colorado, who was a police officer there. He went on a few ride-alongs and quickly became interested in the job. He attended UMass Lowell and graduated with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He joined the UMass Lowell Police Department in April 2013 as a security officer and went on to become a dispatcher and was selected to attend the Lowell Police Academy. He graduated and worked as a police officer for the University of Massachusetts at Lowell for three years. He then transferred to the Sutton Police Department before ultimately joining the Westboro Police Department in July. What he likes most about this job is community policing and interacting with the public. He believes in positive interaction and a quick smile can change someone's day. That's who your police officers are, empathetic, caring people. Outside of policing, he enjoys hiking, spending time outdoors, and exploring new places for great food. He wants to thank and acknowledge his family and friends who have supported him over the years, as has not always been easy. I would not be here today without them. He's being pinned today by his mom and dad. Wendy.
Okay. So, if you'd please raise your right hand, do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the United States of America and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will support the constitutions and laws thereof? And that you solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a police officer for the town of Westboro and will obey and be bound by such laws, rules, and regulations as are or may be from time to time laid down by the government and the town of Westboro Police Department, so help you God. Congratulations.
Well, that concludes our swearing-in ceremony. Again, I want to thank you for giving us the opportunity to come before you and how proud I am of my entire staff, and it truly is our honor to be serving such a great community. Thank you very much, have a great rest of the meeting.
Thank you all once again, congratulations to those officers and thank the rest of them for all being here and support.
You're welcome to stay. So go.
We've got an exciting meeting ahead of us, everyone can stay.
Civic, civics lessons for the kids.
Yeah, that's good.
Civics lesson for the kids.
Nobody here for the bingo premise?
Okay, I'm going to move us, continue us moving forward here for our long agenda, so next on the agenda is the Town Manager's Report. Caught you off-guard, I knew it.
So, we had a couple of changes in our staffing, so Alexander Sensick left the town at the end of July, I'm sorry if I didn't say that right, he just became the chief assessor in the town of Oxford, he was the assistant assessor here. We've hired our energy advocate intern, Colin Montgomery, who joined in late July, so he's been working in our office on the Mass Save Grant Initiative. He is a senior environmental science major at Assumption College, and he's also a starting member of the defensive line for the MENS ISAKI team. Our veteran services officer, John Gallinah, is retiring from his position tomorrow, and he's a town resident, a proud veteran of the US Navy, so we thank John for his service to the United States and to the town. The public art policy, I met with Jenny Silverberg from the Cultural Council, so we're continuing to work on the public art policy. I'll be meeting with the Cultural Council at their next meeting to just refine some things, and then we'll submit it to council before it comes to you for review and approval. The capital planning and sustainable Westboro, I've talked to Pete Dunbeck, we're always trying to keep sustainable West, keep the communication about things that are going on with purchase of fleet or any building projects, making sure that sustainable Westboro is part of those conversations, and so we've, I've suggested that they have a liaison to the Capital Expenditure Planning Committee, so even though they wouldn't be a voting member, but they're going to go ahead and appoint a liaison at the next meeting. And then the Waste Management Exploratory Committee had its first meeting on July 27th, so we're starting, they're starting that work by reviewing the mission and preparing for a meeting with the Board of Health and DEP. Department had updates, the health department is, is reporting that COVID-19 cases remain the same, so COVID-19 tracking data through wastewater appears to be ticking upwards and surrounding towns seem to be seeing the same. The stop the spread testing program has been extended through March 31st, so there's several sites that people can go to. On Saturday, July 23rd, the World Health Organization declared the global monkeypox outbreak a public health emergency of international concern. This is the agency's highest alarm, defined as an extraordinary event which is determined to constitute a public health risk to other states through the international spread of disease and to potentially require a coordinated international response. So, the health department is following that closely, and I know that the state health department is also following that. Also, the health department is moving their applications to the online platform of Permit Pro, which is used by several other departments, so it's nice to see that. You'll actually hear from our community development director at your next meeting on how his department uses those systems. The finance department is reporting that the estate of Charlotte Spiny has been finalized, so the trust bequeathed $34,548.66 to the Westboro Fire Department ambulance fund. All of you know this, but Ms. Spiny was a longtime Westboro resident and helped many students through the Charlotte Vision Scholarship Trust. We've received several grants in July, we've also had several RFPs and contracts awarded, which are listed within the report. The fire department, fire prevention division, has been working with the Westboro Public Schools on conducting safety inspections. There's been a change of personnel in the communications center and dispatch. Raymond Harding has been hired and comes with a decade of experience dispatching at both American Medical Response and Metacoma Regional Dispatch, and the department has firefighter interviews, actually they held them today, and they're also working to fill the deputy chief position. In the planning department, they had a public hearing for the new auto dealership at 18182, which the board saw, heard at your last meeting, so some of the things that they're talking about are the BWALT, which you had brought up as a comment to the planning board. And then the continuation of the public hearing at 2529 Research Drive, which we've also had before this board, continuing to work through that project. And then the, the planning department is looking at a future town meeting, Warren article in October for the library renovation project, they need to establish dimensional regulations. And then the master plan implementation committee, letters of interest are due to the planning board by August 17th. The, the public works department, paving of Lyman Street between East Main and Route Nine is complete. FAQs were posted regarding water restrictions, there were several questions, so they were happy to post that for information. The DPW is advertising to fill a mechanic and laborer position, and then the sector maintenance program continues with great success. In youth and family services, the community programming has slowed for the summer, but they're, the department's laying the groundwork for the fall, and they're looking at moving forward with their two ARPA proposals. And they're looking at moving forward with their two ARPA proposals that were approved by this board. The Youth Commission currently has a vacancy for an adult member. Anyone who's interested can reach out to Kara or submit a letter of interest to Cela in our office. As of July 16th, anyone in the U.S. can now call or text 988 to reach a 24/7 suicide prevention hotline. This resource is years in the making, and we are beyond grateful to have such an accessible service for people in crisis. That concludes everything written in my report. I also just wanted to pass out to the board. We created an annual calendar for the Select Board. So this is just something that we'll post on our website. We just completed it today. So it just sort of lays out the things that we can expect for the different meetings. And at the end of it, it lists out contracts and when they're, contracts that this board needs to take action on and when their expiration date is. So we'll post that on the website as well.
That's great. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Now we can know what we're doing, right? Great. Okay, next on the agenda, thanks to that, Kristi. Next on the agenda is the request of the American Legion Post for a Bingo Bino Permit. I'm not sure if anybody's here.
So we don't, we don't have anyone coming for that, but the American Legion has applied for a one-day Bingo Bino Permit for an event on September 30th at the Senior Center. It's issued through the Massachusetts Lottery Division's Charitable Gaming Division. And under Mass General Law, it describes the allowances and fees. And it requires the permission of the Police Chief, who has already signed off on this permit, and the Select Board. I put lots of information in there about the fact that the town has accepted this many years ago and what the act is that was accepted. So we just need the board to approve the permit, and then they can move forward with their events.
I would move to approve the application from the American Legion, Stowe Parker Post 163, for a one-day Bingo Permit on September 30th, 2022, to be held at the Westboro Senior Center at 4 Rogers Road.
Second?
Okay, any comments or questions on that? Just the notice they put in the thing, this is for them for scholarships and working in the community, so to give back. All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. That passes.
The next two agenda items are hearings that we've sent out notice to the businesses. So I think if we can, even though it's not a public hearing, if we can wait till that time, just to give them time to come.
Okay, so let's move...
We could probably do the number nine with the Town Clerk.
Sure. Wendy, are you ready for? This is number, item, number nine on the agenda is the Votes Act changes to elections Town Clerk. This comes with an approval for police officers at election locations. Over to you.
This is just, it's a new law that they, was passed to move a, move to approve, well, to have a sufficient number of police officers at the polls. We've always had two police officers at the polls. But they're forcing it for all elections throughout the state, for every Town Clerk. And there's supposed to be a sufficient number at each polling location. We've always, we have everybody at one location. So I think two officers is enough. That's what we usually do have, is one down in the gym, and then there's somebody at the door.
Perfect.
Do we need to determine the specific number here or just allow the chief to decide what he feels?
Yeah, I mean...
Or yourself, or?
Yeah.
The motion that we offered gives some flexibility and Town Council said that that's, that motion is sufficient, if you're comfortable with it.
You want to make the motion?
Sure. I move to approve a sufficient number of police officers, but not less than one, at the polling location at every election therein to preserve order and to protect the election officers and supervisors from any interference with their duties and to aid in enforcing the laws relating to elections as required by Section 72 of Mass General Law, Chapter 54, which was changed in Section 13 of Chapter 92 of the Acts of 2022. Further move to designate the Police Chief the authority to assign specific police officers according to scheduling and availability. The Town Clerk will advise the Police Chief on the location and time the officer is needed. Second?
Any comments or questions?
Not a question on this motion, but in our packet, there's, what we hear about the vote by mail, is that sort of part two of this element, this item? So there's a vote by mail aspect of the Votes Act. And I understand that the board may choose, if it's so desired, to opt out.
Sorry, so, right.
That's coming at an upcoming meeting, right?
At an upcoming meeting. So the board, so just to elaborate, so the board can choose, or towns can choose to opt out of vote by mail for local elections only. And you have to do that within, I believe, 45 days of the election. So since our local elections in March, we're going to take this up. We have to hold a public hearing. And so we're going to take that up a little bit closer. They haven't fully promulgated how everything is supposed to work. And so we're waiting to hear on the requirements for the public hearing.
Yeah, I didn't know if we were, this guy didn't notice that it was for a future item. I just didn't know if that was somehow tied into any aspect of our vote.
Okay.
But not tonight?
Yep, not tonight. Good.
Good question. Thanks. Anything else? Okay, all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. It's still a couple of minutes early on this one. Let's do the next one for you, Wendy, the approve and execute state primary election warrant.
Okay. This is the warrant, I think you have it. Just, it has to be done for every election. And so this one is for the state primary. So I'm just asking all of you to sign the warrant for the state primary.
Great. This is for state primary election on Tuesday, September 6th, with early voting and mail-in voting occurring from August 27th to September 3rd. I know that work is well underway.
Yes.
So this is...
I would move to execute the 2022 state primary warrant on September 6th, 2022, for precincts 1 through 6, located at Westboro High School, located at 90 West Main Street, Westboro, Mass. 01581, from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Second?
All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Do we decide those now? Can we do that afterwards, or?
Whatever, whatever you want to do.
Why don't we do, can we do it after the meeting and just return to you? Is that fine?
I didn't know if you wanted to take up time. Yeah, that's fine.
If that works for you, the, actually, we have, we have a couple of minutes now if you want to bring it around. We have two minutes before the next thing, so why don't we do that?
Okay.
Always fun for the folks watching on TV.
Does Westboro TV have document signing music? Jeopardy theme?
So waiting to sign, just so the public knows, we have a hearing scheduled for 6:35 p.m. for Taste of Andra LLC, doing business as Derani. This is around the liquor license and common vittler hearing. I never know how to pronounce that. Thank you very much. Okay, being exactly 6:35, let's move to that hearing. Kristi, I'll turn to you to...
I don't know if anyone's here for Derani. So we sent a hearing notice to Derani. They experienced water damage at their business in January 2021 and has not operated since. So our office has been unable to contact the applicant. We've sent several letters, notices, certified email, and have received no response. And so we asked them to come before the board to discuss what they would be doing with their liquor license and their common vittler license. There being no one here, the board can still take action. The business having not been in, in business for, having not been in operation for over a year, and we're recommending that the board cancel the liquor license and, as well as the common vittler license. We have followed up recently with the Board of Health and the Building Department to see if any efforts have been made related to fixing the problem. There were some inquiries made in April of 2022, but nothing since then. We have only been able to get in touch with the building owners, who said that they believe that they intend to fix the, make the repairs and move forward. But again, we haven't been able to get in touch with the business owners, so.
And if we make this a motion to, to cancel these, I mean, they can always come back. It makes the wine and malt open for someone else, but they can come back, apply. There's no sanction, we're just canceling because they're basically not being used.
Correct. So this is, so currently with this license being assigned to Derani, there are no wine and malt licenses available, so this would become available. There are alcohol licenses available, which they would be able to apply for, or this one if it doesn't get applied for in the interim.
Perfect. Other questions?
I should know this, but why does one have a wine and malt and alcohol?
It's one or the other.
Right.
But they hold...
They just hold a wine and malt.
They hold a wine and malt.
So they can, they can sell beer and wine, but not?
Not hard alcohol.
Not hard alcohol.
So we have two different licenses for restaurants, a wine and malt or a full alcohol. We have open full alcohol licenses. We don't have any open wine and malt right now. This one will now become available for anybody to come and apply for if we, if we were to cancel this.
I'm just, apologies. Our packet says it describes issues with both the liquor license and common vittler. What am I to assume? Sorry.
The liquor license is the wine and malt license. That's the type, this is two types of, well, there's a number of liquor licenses. There's package store, kind of retail, and then restaurants for the liquor license.
So it's beer and wine, basically?
Beer and wine versus an all-alcohol, ABA beer and wine, but that's there.
Okay. And the common vittler is something separate?
That is just their ability to operate as a restaurant.
Yep. Got to thank you.
Is there a motion?
Sure. I move pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 77, to cancel the wine and malt liquor license issued to Taste of Andra DBA Derani due to the business not having been in operation for over one year and for failing to provide all required documentation.
Second?
Okay, any further comments or questions? Not all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Second motion?
Move to revoke the common vittler license issued to Taste of Andra DBA Derani due to the business not having been in operation for over one year.
Second?
Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present.
Is that effective immediately? I should have asked.
Yeah. We could do the wastewater...
Wastewater Treatment Plant?
Yeah.
Okay, we're going to move to item 13, just because we're waiting until 6:45 for item six. So item 13 on our agenda is the Wastewater Treatment Plant Agreement Amendment Number 7. Kristi?
Yep. So previously, before this last town meeting vote, these changes to the IMA were only made by town meeting. And then town meeting agreed that the Select Board could make these amendments. And so you did make an amendment on June 28th that amended the agreement to say that. And now we have this amendment number seven, so the second amendment, since it became effective this way, that would change the title of the part-time staff position and also remove the specified criteria from the IMA to allow the board, the wastewater treatment plant board, to determine the educational and experience criteria. So this was something that the board has been looking for a replacement for the current employee in the position, and they've been having a difficult time. One of the things that they noted is that currently engineer is in the title. But they feel that a different title would actually open up and maybe market to a broader group, which they think would, would be able to meet the requirements for the position. And so we have run this, I ran this by the DPW, who works closely with them, our DPW Director, who's in support. And I know that the Town of Shrewsbury is also considering this this evening. But I know that they did not have, or the Town Manager and the DPW Director also did not have concerns.
Great. Other questions?
So I think in our packet, it references our DPW Director speaking to Jeff Howland. Is that?
Jeff Howland is the Shrewsbury DPW Director, yes.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve the Amendment Number 7 to the agreement for the construction and operation of the Westboro Treatment Plant as presented.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Let's do number 14 too, yeah. The Extended Municipal Agreement for Inspeccional Services. Kristi, back to you.
So we have an intermunicipal agreement with the Town of Shrewsbury for inspeccional services. This was an agreement we had originally created, I think, for electrical inspections. And then we've broadened it now for other types of inspections. There's no cost to the agreement. It's just mutual aid, similar to what you hear about mutual aid with police and fire. And it's worked very well. So in addition to our Community Development Director being in support of renewing it, I've spoken with the Shrewsbury Town Manager, as well as our Community Development Director, and we would be asking for you to renew it for a period of two years at this time.
Great. Any questions? I want a motion.
I would move to renew the intermunicipal agreement for inspeccional services for a period of 24 months.
Second?
Okay, all those in favor? Four to zero, four being present. Just like the comment, these are, you know, things that we've talked about for a long time, about trying to do this, and again, ways to, in some ways, save money, help out, but also provide better service to residents. So happy to hear that it's going well. And I think as a board, happy for us to extend that, to provide that service. Let's go to item 15. This is the License Site Professional Findings for Permanent Solution for the former Mobile and 30 Bellknap Street location.
So when we purchased the Bellknap, when the town purchased the Bellknap Street property, we were aware of contamination that had happened several years ago. And they'd been working with ExxonMobil and other consultants had been working with our Conservation Commission, moving towards a permanent solution. And then as part of our agreement, we were to hire a licensed site professional to review the findings. And before we were to close out, there was a requirement to make a finding, a permanent solution with no conditions. So our licensed site professional at Timebond did review that document and has provided the report that's in your packet. In summary, his findings, sorry, I just lost it. In summary, his findings are that he has no concerns about the permanent solution with no conditions. This property, when it was accepted at town meeting, this piece of the property that has the contamination became under the care and control of the Conservation Commission. So in addition to the board accepting these findings, where the Conservation Commission is also being asked tonight to accept the findings. So we've talked about the board, this board, accepting the findings contingent on the Conservation Commission not having any concerns with the findings.
Correct. So that would be the motion that we'd look for. If we want to make the motion is to make it contingent on the positive vote of the Conservation Commission this evening. Any questions on this one? Go ahead.
I think there's a conspiracy for me to make my own rule tonight.
Makes it easy on the minute taker.
I move to accept the findings of Time and Bond as presented in the report for 30 Bellknap Street. Permanent solution statement, submittal review dated July 19th, 2022, contingent upon acceptance by the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Two seconds. Okay, all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Okay, being a minute past 6:45, we'll go back to the Class II Dealer's License Hearing for the mobile station. Trying to find the exact address, but this is the mobile station on East Main Street. Twenty-four East Main, thanks.
So following our recent complaint from our office, we asked the police department to inspect the mobile station related to its Class II license, the number of unregistered vehicles. The police department did find that the business was out of compliance with one unregistered vehicle over the number allowed. And you do have the police report in your packet. We then asked other departments to inspect the property for compliance as was done in 2019. As some of you may remember, in 2019, we found several violations and concerns of departments, and the board had moved forward with renewing the license contingent on not finding them out of compliance. So I did provide you a packet of materials in, from 2019 with the violations. And then also with reports from both the Fire Department and Building Department, more recently, concerns that they had. For history, I, you know, we have had, mobile has come before the board several times. And then there was a, prior to 2011, and then we had these violations in 2019. So this, so we did ask, we did send a, a hearing notice, and I believe that they are here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Michael Heineman, I'm an attorney in Framingham, I represent Mr. Azar and the business. Jack Azar is here, who I'm sure you know. I don't know how you'd like to proceed, I'm happy to make a brief presentation if you'd like, or I'm happy to answer questions, whatever you'd prefer.
Well, why don't you go ahead with the presentation? I mean, I think you have the results of here, and I will say we're disappointed that back in front after the, our meeting in 2019. But please go ahead and provide the presentation.
Sure, thank you, as you may know.
Actually, you just swing that microphone, we turned it around for the police swearing in, so we can pick it up on TV, so.
As you may know, Jack's been operating at this location since 1999. For 23 years, he's been running a business there, providing services to the members of the community, providing gas, repairing their cars. He has a Class II sales license for used cars. This inspection that we're here for today, there was a claim that there were seven unregistered vehicles on the property, which according to the police is one more than allowed. I need to talk a little bit about that as we go, but the vast majority, as the police department noted in the report, the vast majority of vehicles that are on that property are registered, they're, they're being fixed because Jack runs an active repair service. The four vehicles that were on the property that were unregistered and not listed in the logbook. So just by way of refreshing, back in 2011, when we were here, the big complaint was there was no logbook being maintained. The state law requires a used car salesman to maintain a logbook of the cars in and out for, mainly to protect against stolen vehicles being chopped, you know, cut up and sold for parts. And so that law allows the chief of police or his or her designee to come in and inspect the logbook. So they have an idea of what vehicles have come in and are going out that are for sale. We were unaware of that in 2011, that was the big issue back in 2011. We've begun to maintain the, the logbook in 2011, and it has been maintained since. This inspection, when it was done recently on July 6th, the officer checked the logbook, found three of the vehicles that were listed for sale in that logbook. He missed one that's also in the book, and I'll talk to you about it, it's the BMW SUV that's there that is actually in the logbook, it's at page 85, the police department have a copy of it. And it's listed in their January 2020 inspection, which I'll talk about as well. So that vehicle's been there, it is in the logbook, it was referenced as being in the logbook back in January of 2020. Okay, so we're really talking about three vehicles that were unregistered and not in the logbook. One of them was owned by Jack, that was insured, but he didn't realize the registration had lapsed. He immediately renewed the registration, and it was registered the next day. And the police department noted that when they went back on the reinspection. That was an oversight of Jack's, for which he takes responsibility, he didn't realize, didn't realize that that registration had lapsed. So we're talking about two vehicles, other than that mistake which he takes full responsibility for. One was his mechanic's vehicle, which is unregistered, and he knew was unregistered, was on the property, he didn't think that was a problem because he thought he was allowed to have one unregistered, ungaraged vehicle on the property. The second is a main registered vehicle, which was a customer's vehicle. And so this customer brings the vehicle to Jack to do work on it, it's registered in Maine. Jack has no way of knowing if that's an active registration or not, he doesn't have access to the main database. And so turns out, this customer's vehicle was unregistered. So yes, there were seven unregistered vehicles on the property that day. The main point I'd like to make is this. The used car sales license is not in violation, has never been in violation since the logbook was fixed in 2011. That says he can have up to five cars on the property for sale. He only has four. He's not in violation of that used car sales license, and has not been. The, this, the police department and this board and prior formations took the position that the used car license was dealt with all unregistered vehicles on the property. And respectfully, I just don't think that's an accurate statement. If it's not a vehicle for sale, it doesn't fall into the, the used car license. There is a town bylaw that deals with having too many unregistered, and if there needs to be bylaw enforcement, there can be. There is a penalty, a fine that goes along with that. Certainly, Jack doesn't want to be in violation of anything, he doesn't try to be in violation, he tries to comply. His, his business has been inspected January of 2020, January 15th, found in compliance, June of 2020, found in compliance, November of 2021, found in compliance, July of 2022 is this one. So the, the, the issue of the license, I would suggest for whatever reasons I've said already, it's not in violation. He did not have more than five cars for sale, he's not above his license, he had four. The license, the notice that we got indicates that back in 2019, this board conditioned the 2020 license on compliance with all permits. The 2020 license was fine, Jack renewed his license in 2021 with no conditions. He renewed his license again in 2022 with no conditions. He stands before you as fully licensed and in good standing with this board. And I'd suggest to you that having that one customer vehicle from Maine that he could not have known was unregistered does not warrant any sort of a penalty or punishment here on his used car sales license. With regard to the other issues, that violation triggered all of these inspections from everybody under the sun. And Jack has had every issue that was identified fixed. Everyone that came out and inspected and found even the most minor problem, a tag missing, something in the wrong place, has been fixed and was re-inspected Thursday?
Yes, Thursday.
Thursday of last week. And so Jack certainly apologizes for his lapses of some of the permitting issues. Certainly COVID played a role in some of that, forgetting to resubmit some, for one of the permits for the, one of the tanks, I can't remember which. But they've all been taken care of, and everything's up to date now. And so Jack wants to continue to do business in this town and be a good citizen in this town, as he has been for 23 years. So we're happy to answer any questions that you have, that's the brief presentation I wanted to make.
Great, thank you. Open up for questions from the board.
So I guess I'd like to clarify some things about the July 2019 inspection.
Okay.
One, he was out of compliance with his logbook, it was missing vehicles. He had more vehicles for sale than allowed under his license at that time, and more unregistered vehicles on the lot than is licensed. The license allows for four, five unregistered vehicles on the property that he runs a repair shop. He can have one additional one, so he's out of, he was out of compliance again. That inspection on July 19th, there were 54 violations. Some of them so severe that his building was shut down and his operation was shut down immediately by the Fire Department because those violations posed an immediate threat to life and property. One of those permits I want to talk about in particular, because an unlicensed hot work event in Boston a few years ago resulted in the loss of multiple buildings and the death of two firefighters. In the July 2019 inspection, it was found he did not have a hot work permit. It took him till, according to the notes we have, February of 2022, excuse me, February of 2020 to obtain it. And that license then expired in 2020. It wasn't renewed until this inspection caught the fact that he no longer had the hot work permit. Similarly, his permit regarding flammable liquids expired shortly after, months after our July 2020, 19, sorry, July 19th inspection and the follow-on work on that. And at the first opportunity to renew that license, he failed to renew it as well. And so what I see here is a pattern of irresponsibility. And to say he tries to be, to adhere to the rules, isn't good enough. It's his job, it's his responsibility as a business owner to adhere to the rules. Not having permits means inspections aren't triggered, either to the town or to the state. And it's, it's created, it's created an unsafe condition. The fact that inappropriate fire extinguishers, I'm, you know, looking at the violations in this town, you can say they're trivial. I don't think they're trivial at all. Driving home from work last night, there was a vehicle with the hood open parked on the sidewalk on East Main. In our July 2019 hearing, there were specific instructions that vehicles were not to be off the property, and repair work was not to be done outside of any catchment area for, for fluids that might leak from the vehicles or, you know, escape. The, the catchment area around his gas pumps was not being properly maintained, that was this inspection. It needed to be cleaned, meaning if there was a gas spill, it wouldn't have stayed within the concrete. And a spill beyond the concrete would run down into the street, into the storm sewers, creating a major safety hazard. As other towns have seen when that's happened, the gas stations. And so if the, in, in 2019, his license was renewed with a commitment that he'd maintained. The fact that we didn't catch it, but he was in violation of his 2020 permit, to me is enough. It doesn't matter whether or not we caught it, he was out of compliance with his 2020 permit when he did not maintain his hot work or his flammable liquid permits. And our bad, we should have caught it at the time and pulled his license then, because we told him in July 19th. If there are further violations, if there's a continuing pattern, which there is, because we're here again, that we would revoke his license.
If I could briefly respond to that. I appreciate those concerns, all valid concerns, nothing to do with the used car sales license. That's the repair shop. There's, if there are permit, and, and I make no excuse for, for Jack's not having gotten the permits, he's gotten them all now. But what I would say is, it's, it is, in my opinion, just me, but I have to say for the record, improper to be tying those permit issues to a used car sales license for five cars. One has nothing to do with the other. I understand the board's concerns, the board's concerns are valid. They need to be addressed, I've made that clear to Jack, he has addressed them. But the one just doesn't have anything to do with the other, so.
So in, in the notes from the most recent inspection, it was noted that there were two engines that had been removed from vehicles and were cleaned and were waiting for disposal. So I assume that means he's, of used cars, that he's buying and reselling his used cars, he's doing repair work to them? He's inspecting them, he's using his repair shop?
He's doing repair work to customer cars, not to the cars he's buying and selling. He may do some minor repairs to those, but those.
So he is doing repair, so he is doing repair work to the cars he's buying and selling? Are you going to tell me he doesn't do that? He doesn't inspect the vehicles, he doesn't bring them into the bays, he doesn't make repairs to the used cars before he sells them?
Of course he makes repairs that are necessary to those. You asked about those engines, sir, and those engines are not from those cars.
I understand. My point about the engines is, he is doing repair work, right, it was a lead-in. He is doing repair work to the used cars he's selling. So the repair operation is part and parcel of him being a used car dealer. And to say they're totally separate is disingenuous.
I appreciate what you have to say, Mr. Select Board, and I respectfully disagree with that, but I hear your point. I don't disagree with you about the, the valid concerns about health and safety. I, I don't want that to be, to be the takeaway here. But I, I think that there is a, there is an appropriate vehicle and form to deal with bylaw violations and permit violations, and I just don't think this is it.
Other questions, comments?
Yeah, you know, I, I would just say I, I sort of follow along with what, what a lot of my colleague is saying. I do get that they're sort of, I think of them a little bit as, as individual, as separate. But there is a recurring theme to all of this in the last 11 years. And going through our packet, there, there was a lot of detail regarding issues over the last several years that is concerning. I'm kind of wondering, other than this dealer's license, I guess, what is the, I mean, what can be taken? What are, are alternatives are there for us to take here in this case? And is it sort of closer monitoring of the station?
I mean, what's before you is the, is the license, so that's the action that you could take at this point. If additional monitoring needs to happen, you know, we could certainly do that. In terms of some of the violations, they, you know, we would have specifically the Fire Department or Building Department review if you did pull the license and there continued to be unregistered vehicles, which is the license that allows that number of unregistered vehicles. So they, I mean, as you stated, he, I mean, whether you're saying that he's in violation of his license or zoning, he's in violation. So it would be zoning that would prevail if he didn't have the, the license for, to have the unregistered vehicles.
In a, in a comment about the unregistered vehicles, I'll remind the select board that in 2019, there were expired plates on vehicles where the plates did not match the vehicle identification number. And there was a supply of expired license plates in a bucket on the wall inside the repair shop. And the board chose not to ask the town manager to have the police report that to the RMV and deal with civil and criminal action because it is illegal to put expired plates for one vehicle on another vehicle. And those vehicles with the mismatched plates all had expired registrations of their own. And so the fact that there was a vehicle with a main license plate, the main RMV and the Massachusetts RMV have publicly accessible websites where you can look up to see if a vehicle is currently registered and insured. And given the nature of the problems we've had and the stipulation about making sure that the appropriate number of registered vehicles were on the lot, it's not unreasonable for me to expect him to be diligent in making sure that if customers are bringing in cars, when you look at the plate and you see the registration sticker's expired, because Maine has stickers on their plates too, that you count it as an unregistered vehicle on the lot.
Just to add to that, I, with all due respect, it's not hard to tell if a vehicle is registered or not. You look at the license plate, you look at the dashboard, Maine has historically done a punch card view, it happened to be from Maine. It's pretty, pretty easy. It's either on the, on the windshield and/or depending upon the license plate, there's a sticker on the plate. So that is not difficult. And given the sensitivity around this matter and the history, common sense would tell me that particularly if there was not a state vehicle, I might take extra precaution to make sure that I understand the registration status of that vehicle when it's coming onto my property. So, you know, I think Mr. Edinburgh makes some very good points, I think you do well, as well, for representing as, as to what we're talking about here in scope. My frustration is. My frustration is, is the continued, both class two related and maybe unrelated, depending upon how long we want to debate that here, violations that have gone on. I mean, this is kind of, with all due respect to the business you're running, which I've heard great things about the repair work, so it's no, you know, this is no reflection of that work. But, you know, I kind of feel like we're having like a childlike conversation here. And, you know, you can tell a child, you know, don't do it, don't do it, something's gonna happen. Until you, you know, take the phone away, the kid doesn't understand that there are consequences to the action.
I try really hard not to let this happen. I take my job very seriously, you know, but during the pandemic with, you know, it's very hard, you know, I do check all the plates for the most part. But sometime, you know, you know, I, I fall a little behind. Like my guy fell and broke his shoulder two weeks ago. So sometime it does happen, but I, I've been always taken more cautious. I, I want to comply with everything. And yes, the, the fire department did find a few new items under the fire martial law. But the minute he pointed out, I took it seriously. I took, I, I took care of it, went away. And I, I do, I work very hard. I, I try really hard to make sure not to exceed this number. But some, some, you know, last week I was doing inspection, three people driving, they didn't realize they're, they're driving with expired registration. I mean, and now with during the pandemic, they renew online, they don't have the tag. So it, it makes it a little bit very difficult for me. But I'm, I'm really trying not to let this happen. I'm sorry, it did happen, but I don't do anything on purpose, you know? Things go out of hand sometime. I fall behind checking registration, but trust me, I do. The minute the detective said it's not registered, I said if, I called the customer, he said it is registered. I said, I said, no, it's not. I said, before the end of the day, I'm taking it back there. Once I get the part, a lot of parts on back order, I said, I'll get it back. But I'm sorry, I have to take it out of there. And that day, before the end of the day, I drove it back to his driveway, you know? The, the truck, the, it's a plow truck that was used in wintertime. It went out of sight. I do apologize. The minute I found out, it was insured, you know? I, I didn't realize the registration was expired. The minute he pointed out that day, I took care of it, you know? He did a follow-up the next day. It was taken care of.
I, I do appreciate.
It makes me look bad, but you know, I'm not as bad as I look, you know, but it, it, things does happen, you know? And, but I corrected, went away, and I try not to make it happen. You know, like, like, like Mr. Michael said, I've been there for twenty-four years. I, I, you know, I try really hard. There's evidence. The detective came multiple times. I was complying. Yes, I made a mistake. I didn't realize it, but the minute I did, I took immediate action. And, you know, I try really hard and I want to comply with everything, you know, with, with the town, with the state, with everything. I'm not a troublemaker guy. I'm a family person and I, you know, I'm trying to make a living.
I mean, if I could just add, I mean, it, it's, I hear what you're saying. Thank you for fixing it. We heard it the last time. It's just, I think from our side, we're, we're taking resources. We get complaints. We send folks, our police officers out. And then it comes back that there's violations. And then we send more inspections out, as we talked about, and I hear you that not part of that, but it's a business in one location with multiple, I guess businesses you want to call it, but it's just really disappointing. I mean, it's, I mean, some of the stuff, as was highlighted by a fellow board member, are seriously, serious things. They've been out of violation since 2020. So I hear, trying to do, but running a business, those things have to be in compliance. And we can't send our police officers out there every single day to check. You don't want that. We don't want that. We don't, you know, our residents don't want to be paying tax dollars to inspect one business. We expect our businesses to be in compliance. As you said, you're running a business, but it's upsetting. I mean, it's upsetting to, to, you know, get a complaint. We go and investigate it. We find an issue. I understand. As you're saying with this one over, but then it triggers other things and we find multiple others.
I have one more thing to say. As far as the hot work, this is something new that just came out. I, I did it, but it was a misunderstanding from the fire department. They said during the pandemic, it was very slow, but he said, if you're gonna continue of doing that, you have to renew it. So he, he did, give me a recommendation, you should renew it, whether you use it or not, just in case you will be protected. And I took care of it. Now it's been done online. I don't have to do, you know? It was a, a new experience for me, but I was able to do it, and I'm not gonna let this happen again. But like, again, I've been there for twenty-four years. This is something new that just happened recently. And I, I misunderstood it from the fire department. They said, if you're gonna continue of doing it, you have to renew it, you know?
You were also out of compliance with your flammable materials, flammable liquids permit?
That, that combined with the, with the fire, with the hot work. If you're gonna do that, that becomes flammable. So we have to do two permits for the hot work and for the flammable combustion. So this is something new to me. I'm learning as I go. But, you know, like, like the fire department, the inspector recommend or suggest to renew it, whether you use it one time or you don't use it, to be protected. And I'm learning as I go.
If I could ask another question, because it comes, I mean, there are, in a repair shop, you have this dealer license that allows for, I mean, five cars. You have many more than five cars on the property. You have two bay, two repair bays?
Two repair bays.
If you don't mind me asking, you know, there's always many more cars than, you know, for repair. What's that process? Because it seems like there's multiple cars being stored there that, if I was going to get my car repaired and I saw fifteen, twenty cars for repair, would be something that would
It's a good point, you know, but I've been there for so long. My biggest problem, you know, I don't like to say no. You know, I see you breaking down. I can't say no to you. You know, eight o'clock, I'm still there. Somebody walking with a flat tire. I can't say no. You know, the person has to go home. So a lot of times, a lot of customer knows I'm busy, but they know I work late. I do as much as I can to, to get back the customer back on the road. And yes, maybe I'm taking a little bit more than I can chew, but this is because I have good heart. I don't like to say no. I, I receive a lot of customers from different garages, four o'clock, five o'clock. They don't want to accept any work. Go see Westwood Mobile, go see Jack, you know? I got a guy broken from New York, broken down, you know? I couldn't say no to him, you know? I said, bring it down here. I'll be more than happy to check it, you know? He came there, I was busy. He said, I couldn't believe you. Said, yes. I was, just came from another garage. I'm not gonna say no. They weren't even close to where, where you were. And you accept me. So I, you know, I gave him right to the hotel. I took care of it the next day, and he went back and he called and thanked me from New York. You know, he made it home and he was very thankful. Maybe because I have good heart.
So, so I think the question, if I could, is, are those, all those cars that they're customer cars to be worked on?
Customer cars, customer cars. I swear, they're customer cars. I mean, they, you know, for the most part, you know, sometime I have a lot of cars, but most of the, most of them are registered. You know, I work late. I try not to say no to customers. I need all the help I can get to survive. You know, during the pandemic, everything gets very harder. No pass, no delivery, you know, no availability on parts. So it made it hard for me. Maybe I should tell the customer, I'm sorry, I can get your part. Take it home when I have it. I'll bring it back. You know, I'll, I'll take all the suggestions I can take. You know, I want to stay there. I want to continue doing business and I want to be in compliance. And I'll take all the feedback. Anybody has any recommendation to me, please, you know, I, I need it. I don't, I don't want to upset nobody.
Thanks. Um, Christie, to you, and it's more of a legal question, but to the comments made by the attorney in terms of this being a class two dealer's license, if we were to do something that's not violating, I guess, what's the process here? I mean, we have a process. We could provide a warning. We can suspend.
You can suspend. You could impose additional conditions on the license. You can revoke the license.
I guess the, the question is if, if they're, I guess the piece is they were in violation. So with that, we have grounds for this?
Yeah, you do have grounds for it. And, and, you know, the, the, the class two dealer license is not just about number of vehicles. I mean, that's what you're permitting. But you're permitting a repair shop that meets certain specifications. So it has to be maintained, well-maintained in a clean and neat manner. It has to have tools and equipment in proper working order, adequate for repair. So the additional violations that are noted speak to the facility's ability to be a proper working repair shop.
So that's part of the class two dealer's license?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Can I just ask a question? Christie, do, do you know what the, by zoning or, I guess it's a zoning question, how many vehicles are allowed and within what perimeter they're allowed? Because I, candidly, that is one of the number one complaints that I get. There are cars all over the place. They're on the sidewalks. They're, you know, it's just, it's difficult to maneuver, you know, line of sight sometimes, getting in and out, depending upon where they're parked, if they're parked along the, kind of the grass, closer to the grass strip near the sidewalk. So is there a, a maximum vehicle number that we?
So you, so zoning allows one unregistered vehicle, which is why even though the license allows for six, oh, I'm sorry, for five, we say six because of that additional unregistered vehicle. In terms of the number of vehicles allowed on the lot, that would be, I'd have to follow up with that question.
Okay.
So sorry, so another question.
Sorry, we do have that report though, out from the community development director, who's also the zoning enforcement officer. So I think.
The most recent one?
Right. So I would have expected.
Yeah, if there was an issue, you would have pointed that out, right.
But we didn't, we didn't ask specifically about
No.
deed restrictions, because my understanding is there are a number of deed restrictions on the property for its current operation use or the site plan approval, having specification of where cars can be parked and how many spaces. Which I suspect there would be, but we didn't ask specifically for that information at this point.
Actually, I did follow up because I did receive that question. And the answer I got from the town planner is that the planning board hasn't put any restrictions on the number of location on, of cars on the site. And that's, and then we did look up and didn't find deed restriction, and deed restriction.
Thank you.
So just to confirm, revoking the class two dealer's license means what to his business?
That he wouldn't be able to sell the vehicles.
Sell cars, but he can still service vehicles. I mean, it's, we're not.
Sorry, she's grabbing the license.
Just a follow-on question while we're waiting for that. And Ian, maybe I misunderstood where you were going with your question, but. Okay, I'll hold.
Right. So it's to, to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles is what the license is for. So if you revoked that, he wouldn't be able to do that.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't hear that.
I said the class, the use, it's a used car dealer's license, so they wouldn't be able to buy and sell secondhand motor vehicles. Which is what the license is for.
So Ian, you had asked our town manager for clarification, potentially the, the options before us, as well as potentially any other sort of restrictions or if we weren't going to revoke, but other conditions, excuse me, we might put on if we were not going to revoke. So is that, is that also an option? If we were going to, and can you put restrictions on, for example, the business will not have any violations permitting or otherwise, I'm just paraphrasing here, for, until the next period of renewal? And if so, then the board will revoke the license?
You can put any additional, you can put additional conditions on the license in terms of stating that the business has to remain in compliance that's implicit in granting the license, so.
But I meant, I meant not, not
Basically, I think, almost be saying a warning. Hey, this is, I think what you're asking, sorry, just a minute. It's a warning saying, hey, because right now this is, the license is active. So it's not a renewal, which is
Correct.
what's happened in the past. So this, we're not renewing the license. It's an active license that would come up for renewal.
Yep. Good, thank you.
So.
But, but the, the license is why we're here discussing.
Correct.
As, but the decision to put any potential conditions on that license, even though it's not up for renewal, I'm just, can, can we do that and tie it to other things is what, meaning site maintenance, the, you know, general, what, what's required by permitting, whether it be border health, fire, police?
Sure.
Okay, we can.
And in 2019, our decision in renewing the license was to do so on the condition that all permits and regulations were, would be adhered to. And we're here again.
If I, if I remember reading correctly, so 2019, it was in renewal, we, we renewed it with the condition that thirty days to come to full compliance. It came into full compliance. We had the meeting on January 28th, 2020. I think this is what you're saying, Alan, is that they maintain renewal status conditions that full compliance with all permitting departments must maintain and further the board reserves rights to suspend or revoke the license if the license holder is found to be out of compliance.
So we've been through the warning process before?
And if I may, there were three subsequent inspections over the years between then and this July one, where everything was found to be in compliance. So I, I don't want to lose sight of that fact.
Yeah, I, I mean, I am, I think I shared the board's frustration with having to revisit this. I do think that there has been a, I'll use the subject to order, reasonable period of time. I wouldn't say an extensive period of time, in which the, Mr. Azar has been in compliance at, based on permitting, you know, spot checks. And based on that, I would be in favor of a suspension, if that's an option for a defined period of time. Not a, and I'm not making a motion, having a conversation, having a discussion. But I don't know that I'd be at a place of revoking the license at this point, based on the current, his, current past history.
And I look at the current past history and, well, you know, the number of other unlicensed vehicles was not of compliance. We weren't, because that wasn't triggered, we weren't looking, but we've subsequently learned that there were other, you know, violations that relate to running a used car dealership as far as permits, as far as orderly environment. At some, at some point, we need to, you know, execute our authority to hold businesses that are repeat offenders accountable. I mean, we've, we, we had hearing on liquor license violations. We had another car dealership in here because they were
Yep.
parking cars on other, someone else's property without necessary changes to their dealership permit. And, you know, they got the same warning. They were given time to fix it. They made, they're making the corrections. But they also know that if they fall in violation again, they'll be before us again. And the revocation of that license is, is an outcome.
Could be.
Could be.
Just for discussion purposes, Shelby, so, I guess the suspend, I guess I'm not, I'm wondering what the suspension actually does. I mean, suspends them from buying and selling cars for a period of time?
Yep.
Well, I think it's certainly stronger than a warning, and it's less than we're pulling the license. And it's further than, at least based on my history of And it's further than, at least based on my history of prior boards, anyone was willing to go. So, I mean, I'm very concerned with the tangent related items that Mr. Edinburgh shared in terms of the permits. I think we've had that discussion, we don't have to beat that horse up anymore. Very concerned about that equally. But, you know, I, I think that a suspension for a period of time, I don't know, if I were the owner, it would send a really strong message, and I wouldn't cross that line ever again.
I guess what are the conditions post-suspension? I mean, are the conditions attached to the suspension?
Yeah, I mean, I think that we might want to be, sorry, let me just scroll back to. I mean, I don't want to keep revisiting this on an annual basis, but the reality of it is, is that we have to as part of the renewal process anyway, right? So it would be a, conditions to remain in compliance with all required town permits, permitting processes, license, licenses, whatever the right language is, I'll look here to, Christie, for the right language. And I don't know if the condition could say, if you're found in violation of those, you know, that's, your license will be revoked, end of story. You know, and I don't know if it requires another hearing.
Yeah, I think you'd have to have another hearing.
Yeah, so that's.
And again, just so I'm clear, class two dealer's license, if we suspended it, revoked it, what does that cover in the business?
The buying, the dealer piece, the buying and selling. The repair shops are permitted through the state.
Repair shop, gas station still operates, buying and selling would be what's suspended or revoked. And what about the, so what is that, I'm sorry, I'm confused with those, but for the unreg, that would mean that only one unregistered car could be on the site at any time?
Correct.
Because that would fall under the, under zoning for the repair? Because it wouldn't be covered under the, and just so I, again, sorry. Right now, the class two dealer's license allows for five cars on the property?
Yes, unregistered.
Unregistered.
Right, or, yeah, so no more than five vehicles for sale.
So if, for sale, which talks to the logbook, showing the logbook. So if we put a suspension in those, any?
They can't sell, they wouldn't be able to sell.
Those would need to be removed, or those, they couldn't sell and they couldn't be buying other ones for that period of time?
Right.
And I guess the question would be how, for the purpose of the discussion, how would we enforce that? Right, so let's just say it was a sixty day suspension for discussion purposes. That would, you know, require who to enforce it and police that? I guess the logbook would demonstrate movement of vehicles.
Right, I mean, the unregistered, except for one, all the unregistered vehicles would need to be removed from the lot.
Okay, so they, okay.
Right, because whether they're there for sale or not, they could have zoning.
So that would be the, that would be the step that would.
That would, and that would require.
In some ways, be self, would address the sale, potential sale of any vehicles, acceptance or sale.
An inspection of the logbook, although, so as a suspension, I don't know that they would put anything in the logbook that showed they were buying and selling cars. Okay, other questions or comments?
I'm, I'm concerned that suspension puts the burden on the town to continue to regularly monitor and enforce. And, and how long is the suspension, thirty days, ninety days? If it's a hundred and eighty days, we're less than a hundred and eighty days till his license renews.
I mean, I think in terms of thinking about, because you brought up liquor license, I mean, I think, I like the idea of a suspension versus revocation and saying, hey, we're trying to work here, but this is another violation, albeit some questions on your side. That also allows us, this is going to come up then for renewal at the end of the year, correct? So if we put a suspension in place, thirty days, whatever, it also then gives us the remaining time of the year while they're back in operation on this to inspect and do the work to make sure there's no violations as we come to the end of the year for renewal of the license. So it's, it's a warning, has more teeth than the last time, which was come into compliance and whatever, and I agree and appreciate that it being in compliance for a couple of years, but it's only a couple of years, our expectation is you stay in compliance. With our liquor violations, they'll be this different, it's, you're coming for us once, we typically give a warning, you're coming for us next time, you get a suspension. So.
And, and a reminder that in July 2019, it was coming to compliance in thirty days. It took significantly longer than thirty days, now we were.
No, it was, no, it was, it came, everything came in compliance in thirty days.
Nope, there were a couple of issues that took longer, and we allowed that based on.
The work that had been done.
The work that had been done and the continuing effort, but we were, we were reasonable in enforcement.
And I, and I think that we, this board tends to be reasonable in enforcement, you know, whether it's restaurant and, I mean, yeah, not restaurant, bad example, but.
I mean, it's a balancing act, and I mean, we don't want to be, I mean, I guess my take is, I'm not sure I want to be here shutting down a business, but I also think that it's a violation that deserves more than a warning that was given last time, because that didn't, it worked for a couple of years, but it didn't work longer than that, so.
Mr. Chair, I'd be willing to make a motion if you like. I move to suspend the class two, class two dealer's license issued to Westboro Mobile, DBA Westboro Mobile, for a period of thirty business days, based on ongoing compliance issued, issues as detailed in the town department reports used in the hearing. Following the suspension period, Westboro Mobile Inc. must maintain, would be allowed to maintain its renewal status with the conditions that full compliance with all permitting departments be maintained, and further that this board reserves its right to suspend or revoke the license if the licensee folder is found to be out of compliance.
Second.
Okay, further?
Can you just clarify what thirty business days would be?
I think it's thirty calendar days, because I think you're open every day, is that correct?
You're open seven days, you open seven days a week?
Yes.
Seven, yeah.
So it's thirty calendar days.
Oh, calendar days then, okay. So I'll amend that to say thirty calendar days.
Okay, comments, questions?
And so, we have a second.
Yeah.
Do you amend it with the calendar days?
I'm good with calendar days.
So just for practical purposes of when the suspension, like, is that effective immediately? From his perspective, he would have to move the cars to Alan's point, and I want to be, you know, reasonable. I don't know where those go, they go back to the owner, if he has a place to store them, I have no idea if he's already taken possession of them, so.
You say effective the fifth, what would be, what would work?
What would be, you know, I want to be.
Within a week or so?
If we could have a week, we'll turn the used car license in along with the logbook in a week, so that it's in the possession of whoever you ask us to turn it into, the board or the chief of police, and we'll have all, we'll have those, the vehicles that are associated with that off the property within a week.
So a week, so that's Tuesday, the sixteenth?
Yep.
So seven days, that works.
That works.
Generous, I was going to suggest the twelfth.
They asked for seven days, I'm fine with seven days. We're trying to work here, we just. Okay.
And before we vote, I would just say, you know, please, this is, I know, I know this can't be fun for you. It's expensive for you, it's not fun for us, and, but it's also not fair to other businesses that remain in compliance. And fully respect that you, you know, your heart and your talents are in the right place, but you're also running a business and you got to stick to the rules, because the rules apply to everyone.
Okay, so we have the motion that's been seconded, all those in favor of the motion to suspend for thirty days? It's four to zero, four being present. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for your time, apologize for taking so much of your time.
Oh, thank you.
On a warm summer night.
We took most of our time.
Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, senior taxation relief committee home rule petition proposal, brought to us by our chief assessor.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, my name is John Steinberg, I'm your chief assessor. I'm here tonight on behalf of the senior taxation relief committee, where I act as the vice chair, the chair of the committee, Sean Keough, as a taxpayer, also a select board member. I want to thank all the members of the committee, both the current committee and those that previously served, for all of their effort that brought us here today. The current members of the committee stand as Robert Haley, the treasurer collector, Tom Dolan, who represents the advisory finance committee, Diane Collins, from the council on aging, who thankfully is here tonight, Jonathan Rappaport, who is also a taxpayer, and then we have two non-voting contributors, Gary Kessler and Phil Migdal, who have also contributed since the beginning, and I appreciate all of their contributions. We were here, I guess it was January of 2020, just before COVID, to report back to you the findings of the original committee. And our tasks beyond that were to find ways to expand exemptions beyond what the town already does. The findings of the committee were that the town doubles and has expanded everything that is available by statute, with a couple of exceptions, which I'll bring you up to date shortly. And so this was our first effort to bring forward something that is being done in other communities, that we could get through the legislature as a home rule petition in a way that we thought would be seamless, given that it's been approved in so many other communities already. We took a look at what other communities were doing, and the many different iterations that exist out there, and what we thought would be good for Westboro, being that we are slightly different than everyone else in our average single family, our income levels in our demographic. And with that, we put together what we believed would be a good fit for the town. Before I get to that specifically, within the last couple of years, we've taken a couple of actions to expand the existing exemptions. The first one being to make it so that more people would be eligible for the forty-one C and the seventeen D exemptions, which have income and asset limits. The income and asset limits were set many, many moons ago by state legislature. We accepted a home, we accepted a local option to apply the cost of living adjustment that is set by the department of revenue every year. And I just wanted to present to you and to the folks at home where those levels have progressed. There was a seven percent increase for fiscal twenty-three, which, as you can see those numbers, and this will be available online, it is available on the assessor's site as well, so it's brought those assets up considerably. And from what I understand, the fiscal twenty-four will again be another aggressive cola. The other thing that the town has chosen to do is adjust once again the senior tax, senior disabled tax veteran tax work off program, back to the hundred and twenty-five hours. The municipal modernization act allowed communities to increase that compensation to fifteen hundred dollars, which the town did, so it was up to fifteen hundred dollars. However, with the increase in minimum wage, we were able to elect a hundred and twenty-five hours once again at minimum wage, so that number has exceeded fifteen hundred dollars. Those workers who are, who are participating for fiscal twenty-three will receive seventeen hundred eighty-one dollars and twenty-five cents credit towards their taxes. That is subject to federal tax, but not state tax. And when, when minimum wage goes to fifteen dollars next year, that'll rise to eighteen seventy-five. So I'm pleased to report those two efforts, which gets more money to those that qualify and more people to qualify for that. So the home rule petition that we're proposing, that hopefully you will bring forward and support, is based upon the senior, excuse me, the state circuit breaker income tax credit. Now, this is a state program that is a credit towards income taxes. And the reason this has become a formula and a format is because it allows the state to do the checking of income and assets. Currently with the exemptions, people who apply have to provide to the assessor's office proof of income, proof of assets to be reviewed by the board of assessors. The state does this annually for people who apply for this income tax credit. So this is a way that many people can, who would qualify within the criteria, can present to us the fact that they receive the tax credit, and it minimizes the work within the assessor's office. Okay, the current criteria is that you must be sixty-five years or older by December thirty-first. You must own or rent a residential property in Massachusetts and occupy it. Now, for the current circuit breaker, that assessed value is eight hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars, because this is based upon state numbers. And for the tax year 2021, for a single individual who is not head of household, the income is sixty-two thousand, head of household seventy-eight thousand, and married couples ninety-three thousand dollars. And essentially, the formula is based upon the property, the property tax payment, including water and sewer charges paid to municipality, excluding any abatement or exemption, can't exceed ten percent of that taxpayer's total income. The tax credit for 2021 was a maximum amount of eleven seventy, okay? And so what we did to come up with the final was look at what other communities are doing and what the payouts are, and what the implications have been. A number of communities have gone back to amend theirs, and a number have given feedback as to what has worked well and what hasn't worked well. So as the numbers go, it looks like about thirty percent of the people who qualify and receive the circuit breaker tax for those communities are get, are receiving and applying for their means-based circuit breaker tax. Now, one thing to bear in mind is that the circuit breaker can be received by renters. Renters would not qualify for the exemption that we're discussing because you have to own your property and pay taxes. So one thing to bear in mind is we have a higher percentage of renters than many of the communities that we're comparing, that have these currently. So out of the number of recipients of our circuit breaker, our percent of those might be lower. We'd have to see over time, simply because we probably have more renters than these other communities that receive it. There are communities that have a variable number, where each year it's determined how, what multiplier of that circuit breaker amount is, up to two hundred percent. The feedback that I got from assessors was, was that was a complexity to the process every year, and caused some hurdles, so I see that sort of being more written in stone as a maximum rather than a variable adopted each year. So for our outlined of recommendation criteria, we thought that the eight hundred and eighty-four thousand relative to the property values here in town was too high. So we, looking at the number of properties and where it laid out, settled on ten percent above the average single family property value from the. settled on 10% above the average single-family property value from the prior year. When I looked at the numbers and the types of properties that would qualify for that, that still left about 73% of the properties would be eligible within that criteria. So it's, you know, the goal was to still have a lot of people within that circuit breaker be able to qualify for this. But not have so many, if we went with 84, the 84, I think it was like 92%, right? And so it was what's best for Westboro compared to a community like Concord that has one, or Wayland, that have much higher average single-family values, or Sudbury for that matter. And to fix it at 100% match of the income tax credit and not to exceed that. There is within the language of it, I think, if you reviewed it, there's a range of 50% to 100%. And that's in there simply to allow the Board of Assessors some flexibility based upon the sheer numbers that come forward, because there is a, a limit on that relative to the percent of the total levy. Okay? And some of the criteria that you saw in there, like the sunset clause that exists, okay, is there because it's in all the others, right? When I read through them and I went through all of them, there are certain criteria that is in all of them. And the goal was, since this has been vetted through the legislature at the state level, was to try to allow ours to move smoothly through the legislature. So not to exclude any particular clause that might be there for a reason that we're not in touch with if we don't have a good reason for excluding it. You know, we want to get it through. We want to get it operational as smoothly as we can. The other difference that's, uh, that's in ours compared to some of the others is many of them, most of them actually, are a shift within the residential tax base. So even with communities with a single tax rate, like Hopkinton, they shift within the residential. So for those communities, they can have a higher residential tax rate than they would a commercial rate because anything that's exempted within this program stays, it becomes a value exemption, stays within that residential class. I feel pretty strongly that this is an exemption like any other exemption, and where especially, at least now we have a single rate, that the exemption benefit should be borne by all of the taxpayers, just like the 41(c)(1) or the 17d, or this tax work-off program. So this would come through the overlay like the others. Because I, no one could really give me a good explanation, frankly, as to why there's a shift. I asked a million people and they just basically said, because it's a shift within the residential. Okay? So that, I felt pretty good about that. I felt strongly, I don't think that's going to be an issue. Again, it's an exemption like any other. And that brought us to the last thing that I wanted to point out is I think initially, these are the numbers of qualified people who received the circuit breaker within town over the last four years. There were 345 people who qualified and received the, the circuit breaker income tax for a total credited amount of $352,790. The reason 2020 is the most recent year, it's the most recent year data is out from the state because of the timing of income tax returns versus the processing. The average credit was $1,023. So if, uh, if 30% of them got 100% match, it'd be $105,837. And looking at where our current overlay is, our overlay has been reduced over the last three years. I think it's at a good spot now. I think at least in the first year, maybe two, this would be paid for through, it would be, fall within the overlay. I think it wouldn't be a hit or take any impact on the taxes over the next two years. And then, at least at the current level, the impact on any average single-family tax bill, if it did require additional funding, would be about $14. And that brought me to, uh, the language, a little small for everyone to read on the screen, but I gave you a copy of it. And of course, this is not, this language has not been vetted through town council yet. You are the first stop, so to speak. And that's the shortest presentation I think I've ever given you. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks.
Tell me where I can park my car.
Yeah. Thank you for, uh, for presenting that. Thank you for the committee for coming up. But this is what we had asked for, I think, to, to look at what else was out there. So thanks. Open up for questions, comments from the board.
Well, I, you know, I'll start. John, thank you very much for this effort. Being a member of the committee, yeah, I know how much work you've put into this. Really the driver behind this initiative. So thank you very much. One of the comments, the things that John mentioned was the three-year sunset. And I think that was in a lot of the other towns' proposals as, say, a check-in, right? If, um, you know, we're estimating it's going to be a $100,000 impact. If it ends up being more or less, it gives you an automatic opportunity to sort of, you know, either decide to change the percentage amount you're giving or, you know, make a decision on it. And so that was kind of standard language. Otherwise, it looked like, because it, it was roughly, I think a dozen towns that we saw had something, you know, it made us feel very comfortable that, that this would get through the legislature, hopefully fairly quickly to be able to helpful to people, you know, hopefully later this fiscal year, if possible.
Thanks, Sean. Shelby?
Thank you so much to the committee and, uh, John, for this presentation. For, uh, could individuals who qualify for the circuit breaker also be part of our work-off program?
Yes, yes. Well, actually, they could also receive the other exemptions as well. That's one of the benefits of, of this particular home rule exemption going this route. Currently with the statutory exemptions, you can receive the work-off as well as a statutory exemption, but you can't receive multiple statutory exemptions. In this case, this would be on top of, which frankly, given where the statutory exemptions are, you know, you could, they, the 17d max is out at $350. The 41(c)(1) can go up to $2,000. But if you have an $11,000 tax bill, while $2,000 is a lot of money, frankly, to some, it, it's starting to be not enough, so.
So, so it could be up plus this?
It could be $3,100.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Alan, do you question?
No, no questions. I'm just very creative and supportive of, of the idea. I'm very comfortable doing it through the overlay and having, and seeing it as other exemptions that are borne by the entire tax base rather than the residential shift, so.
I agree. So from a board's perspective, I have no further comments. There's no motion needed for us. This is really kind of education. This would be put on the warrant. We placed on the warrant for us to vote on accepting it and placing it on the warrant ourselves, and then voting to support it when we vote on the warrant. So if there's no other questions, thank you.
Yeah. So I believe the warrant, Kristi, would be to request to petition the general court.
Yep. So I think the next step sounds like will be take this, get it to council, have them look at it as we prepare for placing it on the warrant.
Yep. All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Okay. Next on the agenda, item eight is the funding and approval process for library renovation project. Again, this is discussion. Purposes, Kristi, I'll turn it to you. And just as a note, this was something that was discussed at finance team meeting last week, I guess it was, last Tuesday.
So as, as some of you might remember, when we were discussing the failed school project, we brought up the possibility of the need for a debt exclusion based on your comprehensive fiscal management policies. Our comprehensive fiscal management policies have a goal of keeping debt around 7%. And then right within the policy, it says that if you were to go to 10% that in, in no case would you, or sorry, in no case would you go over 10% without a debt exclusion for that project. So, um, as, so for the fails project, we actually had, at the time, created the debt strategy. And so that kept us from, from sort of meeting that threshold. And so the debt strategy also led to an additional piece of the comprehensive fiscal management policy, which spoke to any project through, I believe it's annual meeting 2019. And that any, I'm sorry, I'm just going to read it because I think it's easier. That the strategy was applied for all debt authorized through the March 2019 annual town meeting, and any debt authorized after March 2019 will require an alternative funding source until such time as debt has been discharged. So understanding the fiscal management policies and how often we, you know, look at it and refer to it. With the library project, I had asked our finance director to, to estimate if we were getting close to that 10% threshold. As you know, we don't have a number at this point for, for the library. I know they're working on it and I hope to get it by the end of the month, I believe. So the email that's in your packet is purely based on assumptions, so, and estimates. And so we want to be really clear about that. So the, the calculations that were done assume a $35 million library project. That is just an assumption. That is not the number. And so assuming certain rates, certain, that would get us up to about a 9.1% on the debt service. So still under that 10% threshold. So we're bringing it to the board because in addition to the library project, we know that there's some additional large capital projects that are at least currently in the plan for FY '24. The total amount of capital projects that are currently in the plan, which as you all know, that shifts around annually, currently in the plan is about $9.8 million. So again, purely based on estimates. We still believe that with the library project, if it was $35 million estimated and the $9.8 million in capital projects that are currently on the capital plan, we would still be slightly under, but knocking on the door of that 10%. So we just wanted to bring it up for discussion. We've fully had this discussion with both the library director and the chair of the library building committee. And Sean was there as well as the, your representative on that committee. And then we did just have the discussion at the finance team meeting. The finance team had a discussion, but didn't offer a recommendation. They just had, we just had a brief discussion about the fact that we were having this discussion tonight, making sure that they understood it. And then you also received an email last night from Mary Johnston from the Board of Trustees with comments about, about this discussion and the potential for debt exclusion. So just for the public, we are not required, we are not legally required to have a debt exclusion because we are not at our levy limit. So because we have so much excess levy capacity, this project can move to town meeting and be approved as we typically authorize debt just by a vote of town meeting, two-thirds vote of town meeting. What a debt exclusion would, would require would be the town meeting vote and then also a ballot vote. Towns who are at their levy limit have to do debt exclusions in order to purchase things that would bring them outside of their levy limit. So not required. We haven't done one, as, as is pointed out in the email. I think it said since 1999. And that was because we were required to do so at the time. So this is really just for discussion.
Great. So I'll open up for discussion on the board. More questions?
I'm sort of interested, I don't know if it's been on or will be on an agenda of the Advisory Finance Committee.
It was.
Is it a direction forward or if they've taken any action or specific recommendation to us on the way forward for this?
The chair of the finance committee is here. But I don't believe it's been on an agenda. It's a vote of the select, it would be a vote of the select board.
I guess, I guess I'd be interested in, as they are an advisory finance committee, getting their advice as they look at it. You know, one of, I guess my, my concern is given the size of the grant from the state and the potential, and I know we're only working with estimates, size of the project, that this as a single project would consume a lot of our debt flexibility. And to get to a point where we're close enough to that 10% limit that a small project that comes up that's needed for a borrow would then have to trigger a debt exclusion. You know, I'm sort of thinking down the road. This, you know, the debt won't hit us immediately as the project moves forward, it comes in, but then it's, I assume this would go long-term bond most likely, and so it's, you know, has a 20-year impact. And I know other projects come off as they finish during that process, but I'm concerned that there'll be a window there where we had, if we don't do a debt exclusion for this project, we're going to end up needing to do it for a smaller capital project or a smaller borrow. And that sort of shifts a burden and changes the process of it.
So just to be clear, so the, this, this is, this is our policy and we want to follow our policy. But we wouldn't be, um, Leah, you can jump in if I'm saying this wrong, but we wouldn't be necessarily required. Right. Right. It's just our, it's our policy. Additionally, um, as the budget, so it's 10% of our general fund budget. So as our budget grows, that 10% number changes.
Yeah. I, um, you know, I would just say I don't know of an example where a town has put forward a debt exclusion where they haven't needed to do a debt exclusion. Yeah, I feel like we're breaking new ground here. You know, because it is such a serious thing you put forward, right? I mean, typically it is a town has a project or has an operating budget that they cannot maintain and is required to do a debt exclusion. So the term debt exclusion, when put out to the community, can be considered a fairly terrifying statement, right? We need a debt exclusion. And here's the problem. We get a couple of hundred people come to town meeting who are going to understand exactly what that means. And then come November, we're going to get 6,000 people to come to the polls and they're going to be like, what do you mean we need a debt exclusion? I thought we were in pretty good shape. And they're not going to understand exactly, you know, they're not going to understand the fact that we're just calling it that even though it's not required.
And, and maybe to reinforce your point, an override for operating budget items, which was one of the things you mentioned, is not a debt exclusion. That's an operational override, that's a permanent override. The debt exclusion says that this capital project or this specific expenditure is excluded from our two and a half, you know, prop two and a half limits. And that goes away once that project is complete and the debt is serviced.
In 20 years.
In 20 years.
But they also do the debt exclusion because currently their levy limit does not have the capacity to handle the project.
Right. That there's, there's not enough operating budget to service the debt.
No, I agree. And we talked about this in finances, as, as finance team, as Kristi said, and, um, you know, I had comments there, you know, I had, I guess I'll call it pros and cons of that. You know, pros, I mean, large projects, you know, bringing it to, and, and large projects because of the, or a large project and because of the concerns that we have all heard from residents about escalating tax bills and, and controlling spending, et cetera, was, well, this gives it a chance to get more people to vote for it than town meeting versus, than a normal town meeting, to, to your point, Sean. The con to that is we have a policy. And you have policies for a reason, and this doesn't trigger anything in our policy. And I think the comment I made at finance team is, you know, going forward, maybe there's an amendment to our policy that says, you know, we say seven to 10, but maybe it's saying, you know, anything that's over a certain dollar amount, so a large project, and I don't know what that number is, 10 million, 15, 20, requires it to go to debt exclusion. It's really a, and I, and I hear what you're saying, because debt exclusion, I don't know that they're used, typically it's used because of the two and a half piece, but maybe it's something from a fiscal policy. And maybe we don't, well, it still would be a debt exclusion vote. I think that's the method you have. But it's kind of saying, hey, you, you want that, you know, double vote. You want the community to have the chance to think about it. Those that are putting it You want the community to have the chance to think about it, those that are putting it forward to not just worry about getting folks to town meeting, educating there, but to your point, educating them about what they're doing at the ballot. I think in this instance, and it was noted in the letter, to kind of come at this time, ask the library, the library building committee to mount a campaign, probably is not fair to that group to, you know, try to do that and put this on them now, and it doesn't, doesn't follow our policy. So, you know, there's still, I mean, there's still work to be done. I think that, and I see folks in the library here, I think it's going to be work to be done at town meeting. We know that people are, to put mildly, not pleased with the taxes, and they're not going to be pleased come third quarter this year when those tax bills come out that are going to be dramatically higher. We are going to get a lot of complaints at that point. People, some people know it. They haven't seen the numbers yet. We're going to, we're going to see them. We're going to hear it. But I guess in coming around, what my thought is, at this point, is we follow our policy. That's what we've been doing. That's why we have a policy. Now, if something dramatic happens and the number comes in astronomically high that triggers it, then we follow our policy and think about it. But at this point, nothing indicates that it's going in that direction. So, you know, my take is, is, would not be to recommend a debt exclusion at this time.
Can I ask a clarifying question? Christie, the debt strategy statement of debt authorized after March 2019 will have to fund an alternate, so that's also part of our policy. How does that apply here? I guess what I'm saying is, that is also part of our policy, and so, I mean, I know that there's proposed fundraising, but it's a very small part of the overall potential project. So, while important, I wouldn't call it significant in terms of the ultimate downstream impact on the taxpayer, meaning the fundraising.
So, the purpose of, the purpose of that was that when we were creating the debt strategy, we based it on the debt that had already been authorized, and then we were able to show at what points we would pay off the debt as part of our debt strategy. I believe there's only been one article that has been a borrow since 2019. So, sorry, so there's been two that have been general fund debt, Leah can jump in. But one of them was the, an up, a project that was approved to be funded through ORPA, and so it will be rescinded. The other one was additional borrow for the Hastings project, which had already been, we'd already had an article, this was a subsequent article, to increase the borrow.
Thank you.
Sorry.
No, no, thanks.
I would just make the comment that there was a vote at town meeting, and I'm getting my dates wrong here, maybe 2016, to put in for the library, right? So then, we all agreed in town that we would at least try to get the grant for the library, and then we went after that, and then after that fact in 2019, basically, this language says, "Oh, by the way, if you get the grant, you know, you need to come up with the rest of the money yourself, too," which was sort of after the fact and kind of, I would argue unfair. I'm not exactly sure why that language was determined at that point when they knew the library at some point was already in the works, you know.
Please.
I don't think that the language is meant to say you have to find your own money. The language is meant that you're not going to use the debt strategy money, and therefore, taxes are going to have to be raised in order to fund it.
Right.
Okay, so nobody was saying, "Go, go, go out and find $30 million on the street."
A really big, big.
So, that, that was the purpose of that, was to say taxes would have to be raised in order to fund.
So, I don't have to go out front with that can tomorrow and shake it.
Yeah, no, and thank you, Leah. That's, yes.
And I guess just the piece there is that it's still, whether it's.
We want to amend that policy to say, "The alternative is, taxes will go up."
What do you think, I mean, incorrect if I'm wrong, but whether, you know, this is really about, do you go traditional route, under policy, town meeting votes, they authorize the spending of debt, which is an authorization to raise taxes? Or do you go to town meeting for that same authorization and then go to the ballot box, which is the kind of double-check, which still, the funding source doesn't change. It's still raising taxes. The amount doesn't change. It's just, it does become a debt exclusion. And to Sean's point, we can put it there, we don't really need a debt exclusion by its definition because we have capacity, excess levy capacity there. But again, it's just a, a method, it would be more as a method for potentially greater community participation in the decision to impact the tax bill. So, and that was where my thinking is, of something we should, I would suggest we talk about of an amendment post this, because we know that we have other things we have on our capital plan. We have a, we're going through the senior center review.
Senior needs assessment.
Senior needs assessment. We have the concept, depending what comes out of there, but potential for a multi-generational center. We have on the capital plan, a fire substation. And so, again, big capital projects, and, you know, they may already trigger. But maybe we'd be clearer in our policy if that's what we want, and that will be a question. I think that comes to finance team, advisory finance committee, that we set a policy that says anything over, again, just my suggestion, anything over a certain dollar threshold requires by policy that we do it in this, you know, kind of double approach.
I think, if I may, one of the concerns that in the email was the, was the timing, and you've already raised that. Having that threshold amount would make it clearer because we wouldn't have to sort of do these, the calculations, and they wouldn't change year to year, so.
And that's really, and it also takes out the fact that if we get to 10%, and then we have a borrow for $1 million, it takes you to 10.05%. It's not like you want to do a debt exclusion for $1 million, but, you know, something that's going to be, and who knows what pricing will be for any of these things, but say it's $20 million, I mean, say it's similar to what the libraries come up with, that would be a suggestion. So, that's, again, not related to what we're discussing here, but thinking of tonight on the library project, but something to potentially think about as we move forward from a, from a policy standpoint.
I think from a policy standpoint moving forward, that's a good idea. As I look through our current policies, the policy doesn't state that, that 10% and how we use it as first come, first served, but just says we don't want to go above it. And we have, we have a capital planning process that's designed, and it's, each time we go through it and there's better iterations, it gives us a better and better forward-looking view of what, of what's coming. And I, so I think it's okay for us to take a forward look and say, what other projects are coming over the next? The plan's pretty solid over five years, and say, how close might this get us? And if something is going to trigger, you know, put us just over this 10% where we want to do a debt exclusion, prospectively picking which project that is. I agree that, I agree that the timing is bad all around, as far as making a decision, you know, even discussing it, right? We don't have an updated project estimate. There's not much time from the time the project estimate comes in. We, I'm not expecting, you know, happy news, that the cost of construction has dropped, given the marketplace. You know, and, you know, the limited time from when that number comes in to town meeting, and then, you know, subsequently in October, and subsequently to a November election date, you know, is a lot, is a lot to digest. And, you know, part of me worries, is it, is there even enough time for the folks who attend town meeting to digest it? You know, and that as well. I mean, I'm really, I'm really torn on this. I mean, you know.
What is the timing? I know the estimate, the new estimate is not in yet, and it's expected later this month. I don't know who can.
Hopefully, end of the month is the target.
So, that gives us, and the warrant has to be closed by the middle of September?
No, it's our last meeting in September, so the fourth Tuesday in September, we'll close the warrant.
But to get the question on the ballot, I believe it has to be 60 days.
Right, right. So, we would have lost that window, but we, if.
That would be beginning of September, basically.
Right.
Yeah. And there's a question, do we even have the number by that time?
Right, right.
And that's kind of the tightness that you have here. I mean, our other, our other option to just, sorry.
Well, no, I would say for, so, for it to be required or for us to consider it, the project, I mean, 35 is, I think, a conservative estimate, hopefully on the high side. I mean, honestly, the project would have to come in like north of 50 for it to trigger this. So, I mean, if it comes in over 50, then it, it's not getting by town meeting, right? I mean.
Well, I think, right, I mean, I think that if it were that high, and it, there would be just lots of questions, let alone forget even strategies and policies and anything else.
And just a reminder.
At least it would be for me.
Yeah. Reminder that town, at town meeting, it's a two-thirds vote to approve, and the debt exclusion is only a 50% vote, so the town meeting is already a pretty high hurdle.
So, I guess.
You're educating me. That's good. I didn't even know that.
I'm trying, yeah.
I, so, appreciate all the information that's in our packet. You know, for me, this is pretty straightforward, and Sean, I appreciate your opening comments about kind of the confusion in the, among the general public that a debt exclusion when not required could cause, it's hard for folks, honestly, sometimes to understand levies.
Athletes are going to go, "I thought I was just voting for the governor today."
Right, right.
And CPA.
Well, and CPA, right, right, right. So, but given that this falls within, you know, the, our, our policy, even with the additional capital, capital items, I would not be in favor of a debt exclusion based on where we're at.
I just have one question, as I try and watch other town meetings as well. The school committees talked about the fact that the renovation projects at Hastings, when we backed out of the MSBA and did a large project to spread it out over years, that now that, some of that work because of the cost is triggering other required projects?
You're talking about Hastings?
Yeah. And do we have any sense of what the scope of those are?
So, I don't have a specific answer to your question, but last year was the first year that we asked departments to look beyond the five-year period and to submit to us projects that would be coming, you know, in six to 15 years. And so, and, so we're working on pulling that. We did get that from some departments, and we're working to refine that. And just as a reminder, one of my goals that the board set this year was to start to do exactly what you were describing, which is to kind of plan out these projects and look at, you know, the impacts and the right timing. So, that's not a specific answer to your question, but the idea would be that some of those projects would be described or submitted by the school department, as well as all other departments, for those future years, so we can start to understand.
No, my impression from watching the school committee meetings is that some of the projects currently in the capital plan couldn't move forward without other activity happening beforehand, similar to the stop that was on Hastings because of the fire sprinkler. But eight-way compliance is an issue.
And I don't think that's come before us on it, so.
I don't think, I don't think there's numbers to it yet, but I'm concerned about.
It's difficult, because if we don't get that information submitted to us in a capital plan, then we can't plan for it. So, the only item on Hastings, for Hastings on the current capital plan is the Hastings roof replacement. And so, that's, that's all, that's all we've been told.
So, as a member of the school building committee pre-K to, pre-K to three, that has not, we have not discussed Hastings recently. The focus has been solely on sale, solely on fails, excuse me. And so, I know that there, there's work being done, discussions, planning for Hastings, but that has not been a meeting content.
So, it sounds like there's more to come here.
Okay. That makes me nervous, but.
Well, I think that's the, I mean, that's sort of the point of trying to collect that information well in advance from all departments, so that we can, we can plan. I mean, we can only plan as far ahead as we have information for, but that's the purpose, is to have a more long-range capital plan, so.
I don't think there's a need for motion. I've heard from three out of the four of us here, not an indication to move forward. So, with debt exclusion, I don't know if you want to vote on that. I mean, I think it's.
You would have to take a vote to do a debt exclusion, so if you're choosing not, no action would be.
Well, if someone wants to make a motion, they can make a motion. Seeing no motion, let's move forward without it, so, great. Thanks for that discussion, though. Okay, moving forward, item 11, flag policy. The library to the policy.
I do want to thank, sorry, I know we're moving on. I do want to thank the members of the trustees, the building committee, and our library director for being here for questions, even though we didn't ask them. So, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks for waiting, too.
For the flag policy, the board discussed at your May 24 meeting that we had received an update from our town council KP Law regarding the US Supreme Court decision related to the flying of a flag in, in the city of Boston. And so, we were advised, all communities were advised to review their flag policies, which we had recently actually reviewed. And so, town council did make some suggested changes. And so, at the time, the board voted to not allow the flying of any new flags until we address this policy, so we haven't done anything. I don't believe we've gotten any additional requests since that meeting either. If you go to the marked-up version of the policy, you'll see that town council provided some language, and then section 3A, Roman numeral three, speaks to what the board already had, is that, that the, in addition to the flags that are currently, the United States flag, that we could also fly Massachusetts flag, POW MIA flags, Westboro Fire Department flag, and Westboro Police Department flag, and then also flags in recognition of national and state days of celebration or remembrance. If you were to keep that in here, town council did provide some alternative language. Another option would be for the board, and that, and that, the alternate language would require that the board take official action or a formal proclamation in conjunction with flying of the flag. Or you could remove that section altogether and limit the flag poles, the use of flag poles to just the US flag, Massachusetts, POW, MIA, and Westboro Fire and Police flags.
Just a question. I know Patrick is not here tonight. Was he, he was involved with redrafting this, not this version, but the original. Was, did he provide any comments on?
I mean, there was discussion at the May 24 meeting.
No, but to.
No.
No, okay.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I would be okay, since he was so heavily involved with. There's nothing critical pending, waiting till the next meeting to get Patrick's feedback on this as sort of the original.
I actually was, I'll make a motion to move the, to amend the flag policy as presented.
Oh, okay. I'll second that. Discussion, just because it, for, a question, actually, for the. So, that is amended with that 3A3 as amended to not re, because the other suggestion was to remove it. So, your motion is.
I'm sorry. Remove. So, I'm moved to amend the flag policy as presented with the. I'm sorry. Remove. So I'm moved to amend the flag policy as presented with the.
And remove.
And removal of three A little three I, 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 however you say that.
A three.
And I still second that.
Perfect. That was.
Thank you.
Answered my correct question, so I'm supportive of that. So that's great. I guess my follow-on question, and Christie's, on item four, the comments from council says we recommend deleting this provision. I don't, is it just applicants that they are deleting or is the recommendation to delete the whole waiver of viability? I was just confused.
Good point. It looks like the whole section.
Yeah, it looks like the whole section, but she offered the alternative language if you were to keep it.
I think we just go back and simplify and remove.
I think we can, I would amend, see if Shelby wants to amend the amended motion to also remove section four, because.
In its entirety.
Because it's no longer relevant to the flags.
Since we got rid of three A three, don't.
Agreed.
I still second that.
Thank you.
Okay. Further comments? I'm supportive of that, too. So, perfect.
That was my third second.
We got that? Okay, all those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Some ways, I think we may have gotten back to where we started with our flag. Pretty close, but I think actually the language that was added at the beginning, I think is good based on the lawsuit. So I think that's a positive.
So that's good.
Yep. Awesome. Okay. Moving forward, item twelve, Boston Worcester Airline Trail, better known as BWALT, implementation plan. Is this you, Christie, again?
It's me, yeah.
You're on fire tonight. You got all of them. Well, you hooked that up. I'm going to read your introduction. So, so basically, as folks are aware, the feasibility study was accepted in October of 2021. So this was the Boston Worcester Airline Trail feasibility study. And at that meeting, the board asked, asked the town manager to develop an implementation plan, and working with the DPW director, town planner, community development director, select board liaison to active transportation safe, safety committee, select board member Marshall, and ATSC members Julie Squires and Don Byrne. They developed a high-level plan that they included in our packet, and this is the presentation that we're going to see here in relation to those steps.
So you have a memo in your packet, and this, these slides are really just a summary of that memo. So the background is similar to what you just said, which is that the feasibility study was completed in 2019 through a Mass Trails grant. The Conservation Commission and Active Transportation and Safety Committee, then the Bike and Pedestrian Safety Committee, or Advisory Committee, actually, provided comments and concerns related to the report. So the ATSC worked with Waterman Design to address the stated concerns. And then in October, this board accepted the plan and then also asked that the town manager create an implementation plan. So the folks that you just mentioned, I pulled together to start to work on that. In February, we met with Central Mass Regional Planning Commission to discuss implementation and funding. They suggested that we meet with Mass DOT and other trail groups to learn more about how we might move forward. We had that meeting that was coordinated by CMR PC in March of 2022. I think we all learned a lot in talking to some other groups from different communities as well as MassDOT. We talked about approaches to trail development as well as potential funding sources. So even though the feasibility study does recommend that the project be funded and completed all at once, which would be wonderful, we, in talking to some other, the other communities, we felt like we learned to recommend this segmented approach, we're calling it, where we would prioritize a section of trail and start to move forward in terms of easement acquisition, application for funding sources, and then construction. We also felt like that would give us the opportunity to show proof of concept or value to the community as we started to look for funding to continue. So this, so doing the segmented approach, our next steps after tonight would be to update the status on each section. There's been some work, some work done on the trail over the past few years, specifically really related to the, to any development that's happened along the trail. So the planning department has, and the community development director have worked with developers. You know, select board certainly has made comments to the planning department, so that we can start to move, move this forward, understanding what, where the feasibility path was. So we prioritize sections of development. We'll present this to the ATSC as this is part of their charge. And then we'll work with a consultant to determine engineering and design costs for priority segments. You'll see later that we have roles and responsibilities in terms of working with the consultant for that type of work. That would really be the work of the DPW. And I know that they've already started to talk to a consultant. And then we would target the Mass Trails Grant as a funding source. So that's, application is due in February. So we want to start preparing for that, assuming we can move forward. And then like, as I said, the community development department and the planning departments continue to work with developers as it goes along. And that was something we really learned from talking to other communities, is that you might actually develop a portion of trail that doesn't necessarily have trail on each side of it. But if you have an opportunity to work with a developer or have a partnership, it really helps to, to take that opportunity and then sort of build off from there. So that segmented approach. Implementation plan for funding, so the feasibility study points to the tip process, certainly not taking that tip process off the table completely, but understanding that there's opportunity for just smaller amounts, working with MassDOT grants, those private partnerships, and then potentially asking the select board to set up a gift account for this purpose. And then the capital expenditure planning committee. So this fall, we would expect to submit a five-year capital expenditure plan, understanding that our preferred funding sources wouldn't necessarily be free cash or tax dollars, but making sure, as we talked about in the previous item, that, that all of the known capital costs are visible in one place. And then the easement acquisition. So the board in 2019, while we were working to finalize the feasibility study, had asked that we stop pursuing easements. And so we did do that, except for any easements that were acquired through those development discussions. And so we would ask the board to allow the easement acquisition to resume. We've already talked to CMR PC about doing something similar to what they did with the Climate Action Plan, which is kind of synthesizing that big document for consumption by the community. So putting stuff into storyboards or brochures or whatever, you know, materials that really make it easy for people to understand the concept and the goal. And then we work with town council to develop those easement documents, which we've already started, or which we've done in the past. So we would work off of those and then pursue easements in priority sections. So in terms of the calendar, this fall, we would, we're presenting the implementation plan to this board. We would also do it for ATSC, working with CMR PC to synthesize that information for materials. In January, we would apply for a DLTA grant, which is a grant through CMR PC, which would really just give them the ability to offer us even more assistance. And then we would, you'd be using these materials to plan for a community meeting in the winter. And then identify the priority sections, DPW, working with the consultant to identify costs, so that when we go to apply for a grant, we can base our numbers on something, prepare for that application, and submit the capital request. And then in the winter, we would pursue easements. We would apply for that grant, as I mentioned, and then co-host with CMR PC the, the meeting for stakeholders in the community. So very similar to the approach taken on the Otis Street corridor, where we specifically invite stakeholders. So people who have property that we might want to ask, talk to ease, talk to them about easements, but also the whole community, just to sort of create an informational opportunity for the community. And then possible articles at the annual town meeting. There could be articles for funding, but I think we're thinking also for easements. So if we have people who are ready to, to execute an easement, we would have to, you would, we would have to get the authority, the board would have to get the authority to accept an easement. And so that would be a town meeting article. And then in the spring, continuing work on easements, targeting that priority area, preparing for the grant award, because we assume that we'll get the grant, the Mass Trails grant, and that would be awarded. And then, and then you would really do that work in the summer. That would be managed by DPW. And then we would sort of just re, you know, sort of continue to manage that priority list. So we're working really closely with CMR PC. They're really excited to support us. We've sent them, you know, all the documents that have referenced the trail, so the feasibility study, the strategic plan, the master plan. And then also working with MassDOT to keep them aware of what we're doing. And then asking for their support as we create easements, because we want to make sure that, you know, we're meeting some of their standards in case we're pursuing funding sources that come through MassDOT. And then roles and responsibilities for the select board, it would be considering supportive easements, creating the gift account, and then supporting any grant applications, typical letter of support like you do for other ones. For town manager and staff, it's hosting the meetings, pursuing easements, warrant articles, coordinating applications, and then keeping everyone updated. Planning and community development, but also hosting meetings, pursue easements. And then, you know, most importantly for them would be discussing the trail enhancements with developers who are along the trail. And then Department of Public Works would really take that leadership role in management of engineering, design, and construction. And then ATSC, in addition to co-hosting the, the stakeholder meeting, really, and then, you know, offering comment on easements, helping with grant application materials, really creating community support. And then also really important would be the development and presentation of a draft trail maintenance plan. So how would we maintain the trail once we build it? That's it. So it's a very high level, which was what was asked, implementation plan. But at this point, all we would be asking for is the board to vote to allow us to resume pursuit of easements, and also just sort of getting consensus on the support of this plan as presented.
Personally, I think this is awesome. I think this is great. Great work. It's what we've been waiting for and expected. It's put everything in a comprehensive and cohesive piece. It, it's easily understandable. I think it makes a whole lot of sense. It puts this last page of putting, you know, roles and responsibilities out there. It makes sense. It puts volunteers in, I think, appropriate places and town staff in appropriate places to really achieve what we're trying to achieve here. So kudos to you and the group on this. I, I think it's supportive of it. I'm looking forward to seeing the next steps of it, too. But I would be supportive of the motion to approve, to move forward on pursuit of easements, myself. But open up to others for comments, too, or questions. More motion?
We know.
I'll just, I'll just say that it's an extremely effective work group. We've made a lot of progress.
Kind of progress.
Yeah. And what I'm certainly most excited about, or one of the things I'm most excited about, is the, sort of that feedback from CMRCP around their enthusiasm around trails and kind of this growing interest. There's, I think, some maybe regional opportunities for connectivity that we didn't, you know, we heard about before, but really is, seems to be germinating a little bit more faster. And certainly at the state level, there's a high interest in, in trails. And I can't even name all the different trunk lines and what have you. But I think it's the right time for the town to be doing this. And having had the opportunity to spend a little time, just this past week, on the Shining Sea Trail, which is down in the Falmouth area, I mean, what, I mean, as I was riding on it, I was like, this, this is awesome. And this is, this could be such, I mean, we don't have the ocean. We have like Chelsea, you're not trying to oversell it.
No, no, but we have the Salamanders.
Yes.
Right? No, but, but it, every trail I've been on has been such a huge enhancement, you know, for the town. And I think, but I think it's about that community education is going to be a critical part of this. You know, certainly following on the debt discussion we just had. Really important to, to get folks to get buy-in and understand the value of this. So regardless of whether or not they would be seeking easements, so.
I'm, I'm definitely impressed with the high-level implementation plan A. I don't think it's as high-level as you're presenting it. It actually lays out a pretty clear step forward and some clear roles and responsibilities. And so I'm definitely, you know, I'll, I'll go ahead, when the time's right, and make the motion to go ahead with the easements. I think that's good. The, the one piece I have a little concern about, because it was mentioned in the feasibility study, was the expectation that we're going to need to show as we go forward with the project how it connects communities and segments of our community. Didn't have a time to get a copy of it, but last week, Somerville released a multi-mode transportation plan that looks at their off-street trails network that they're building, and a plan over the next, I think, twenty years on how to connect it to other off-street and on-street non-vehicle, you know, non-motorized vehicle transportation. So sidewalks, shared bike, you know, shoulder bike lanes, shared lane use, things, and really mapping out for their community. I know it's not directly within the scope of BWALT, but I guess I would ask that when able, as soon as they're able, if the Active Transportation Safety Committee, start looking and thinking about, okay, how are we going to connect this to the downtown? And is it just, is it using existing sidewalks, or do we need bike lanes on Milk Street? Are there other routes we should be considering? How do we, you know, how do we connect people north of Route Nine to the trail, the far, you know, the northeast corner of town? And at some, at some point have a plan that says, you know, here's where we can put, you know, we can do lane narrowing, has been suggested. Here's we can do joint Chevron lanes. Here's we can do separate lanes. Here's where the sidewalk is sufficient for what we need, so that the community also gets a better perspective of, you know, oh, it's, it shouldn't be just, oh, I can drive to this parking lot and park and use it. It should be, oh, I can go from my house, and there's a way to get there and ride on it or walk on it and get back home.
Yeah, I think that that would be great. I think that that's also really largely in scope for the Master Plan Implementation Committee, because that's a large part of, you know, what we're looking at, particularly for the downtown.
And we're still accepting applications for that?
Exactly, until August seventeenth.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Sean, anything?
Yeah, I, I think this is great, and a lot of work's been put into it, and it's time to start executing on the plan. So, in approval.
No, why make a motion?
Sure. I would move that the board authorize the town manager to resume pursuit of easements related to the BWALT trail as appropriate.
Second?
All those in favor? It's four to zero, four being present. Okay. Okay, we're almost back on time. Request for appointments. Couple of these were delayed from the last time. Thank you, Shelby and Kim and Alma on some, on the work they did here. But, so we have two appointments for council on aging, William Lynch and Phil Migdal, and a request for appointment to the Disability Commission from Richard Strecker.
So first of all, before I make a motion, I want to thank the board for the additional time. I know, I, I think that, I speak for Kim and Alma, that I think it was really valuable to have those two individuals and have kind of an informal conversation. There was some familiarity with senior years assessment and in some cases not. So it was a great opportunity to talk about what that was and how the council will play a role in that. So, you know, we never want folks to just join a committee without like, whoa, what am I actually going to be kind of involved in? So I think that was certainly helpful. And I think we have two great candidates who have some vision and some ideas for the work of the council on aging. So I'm excited to make this motion. So I move to appoint Phil Migdal to the Council on Aging for a term to expire. Oh, he should have been more.
So we have two three-year terms, right, and one one-year term?
That's correct.
And do we know what these, are they interested in three-year terms, these applicants? Or, I don't remember.
And do we know what these, are they interested in three-year terms, these applicants, or, I don't remember?
Um, no, I don't remember, hold on.
They didn't express interest in either of our-
Well, if you liked them, I'd put them on for three years.
I think that's what we've typically been doing, is filling the longer term.
Yeah, unless they specifically say they wanted the shorter one.
Yeah.
So for a term to expire?
June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five? Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, um, all those in favor? Four to zero, four being present.
Okay, and I move to appoint William Lynch to the Council on Aging for a term to expire, uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All those in favor? Four to zero, four being present. And then the last one is, Christie, do you want to introduce this one? Or do, I mean, it's just a concurrence of your appointment of Richard Strecker to the Disability Commission, correct?
Yes, right, so when we created the Disability Commission, it's my appointment, and then the board offers concurrence and, um, just let me pull it up, sorry. This individual, we have, we do have room for people who have a disability, and so this person has identified that they would fill that role. And I know that they've also been attending meetings already.
Great, is there a motion?
Sure, I move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Richard Strecker to the Disability Commission for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Four to zero, four being present. Okay. Approval of meeting minutes for May thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved?
Seconded.
Okay, any comments, corrections, additions, subtractions? Comments of thanks for Cela. Okay, all those in favor?
Don't make her type that.
Four to zero, four being present. Now being eight forty-eight and on the agenda for the eight fifty piece, let's keep it on track here. Issues and correspondence of the select board, I will start with Alan this evening.
I want to thank the Board of Health and the DPW for the hazardous waste drop-off day. And the contractors they brought in and the staff that was there, it was easy and efficient. And a few people actually who dropped stuff off let me know that they did it as well, it was great, so. Thanks for a smooth morning on that. And just a reminder that oftentimes, things get discussed on social media and over coffee and things of that nature. But if you really want to let us know what you're thinking and be on the record, come to Open Forum or send an email to selectboard@town.wesboro MA.us. We read the emails, it comes into consideration, and it makes sure that everyone involved in discussing these issues on your behalf is seeing the same information from the same people. And we're all, and we're all fully informed of the opinions of the public, so.
I second that.
So moved. That's all for me.
Great, um, thank you for that, I just want to, actually, just as a follow-up to Alan's saying, I think because of all the questions we've had on hazardous, the hazardous waste day, we've, we didn't put it in for a couple of years. It would be interesting at some point just to get some data and, and, you know, input of how many people used it and how that compared, whatever, just so as we think about, you know, we, we have had a lot of folks that say they want it. We've taken the, you know, we've taken it off a couple of times, so it'd just be good to get that at some point. Just, maybe even just even in town manager's comments, if you just provide that, it would be helpful. I just wanted to add again to the, what we started the meeting with, if folks are still listening now, but just, you know, thank you to our fire department and, uh, you know, horrible accident with firefighters, thank God they're on the road to recovery there. But just again, as was commented to us as a board from the fire chief, the ability, you know, and basically his thanks to the town for supporting additional firefighters that allowed for a full contingent of firefighters to be there. Because of the way the incident unfolded, it allowed for enough firefighters there to be able to go in and rescue those that were injured based on the, the flashback, whatever. So again, it's, uh, it was thanks from him, but really thanks from us to the town because the incident could have been a lot, lot worse. And it was, uh, still not great to have injuries, but just excited, happy that we're, you know, coming out on the other end okay. And that is all that I had. Sean?
Uh, thank you, so, um, from our Economic Development Director, you may have seen an email recently on the new Shop Westboro online business directory that went out. And would say that Zach Bonner, our Economic Development Coordinator, if you've had any experience with him in the little over a year that he's been here, he has made quite an impact. And I think this is another example of that, the website is shopwestbrow MA dot com. Please check it out, there are already a hundred and sixty-four businesses on the website and looking to add more. And I think it's gonna have an impact hopefully and continue to support businesses within the town of Westboro. So thank you to him and the members of the Economic Development Committee and the actual, the Community Development Department in total. Thank you.
Shelby?
Great, just one request, and Christie, you touched on this during our, during your town manager report. I was wondering if the board would be supportive of a letter of thanks to John Galena for his work as a veteran services officer? If we could ask Cela to write a lovely letter for us that we could sign.
Second.
Okay, and that is, that is all that I had.
Great. Thank you. Eight fifty-two, end of our regular session, we do have a need for executive session, so can I have the motion, please? It's Sean's, time to Sean.
Here we go, I got this. I move to enter into an executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Two, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, Linda Smith. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions, DPW, Supervisors, Patrol, Clerical. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-Eight, Section Twenty-One, A Six, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate at Zero Ruggles Street. Under Mass General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A Seven, to act under the authority of the Select Board to approve executive session minutes of May tenth, twenty twenty-two, and May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
And I declare that an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the board's bargaining and negotiating position. And we will not be reconvening in open session at the conclusion of executive session. Can I have a second to the motion?
Second.
I move in second and a roll call vote.
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Keough, yes.
Marshall, yes.
We are now going into executive session. Thank you again to Westboro TV, as always, because I always forget to do it during comments, but, but thank you.
We need Lee here.
Yes, she was great at that.